Good afternoon, or good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Ridgecrest City Council and Successive Redevelopment Agency. This evening, we will have a closed session, so we will go ahead and begin the meeting by calling it to order. And roll call?
Mayor Bruin.
Here.
Mr. Blades.
Present.
Mr. Roger Rotnum.
Present.
Mr. Hayman.
Present.
Ms. Breeden. Five present, we have a quorum.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda for this evening's meeting. I understand there is an edit to the agenda?
We have an addition to the agenda. It's an item for closed session. The need arose to take action on that item subsequent to posting of the agenda. However, it's a closed-session item, so I can't explain that until we get into closed session.
Understood.
But you do need to approve the addition of that item by a four-fist vote.
Which would be a conference with legal counsel?
Conference with legal counsel and, yes, with the standard existing litigation safe harbor language. The case is Mojave Pistachios LLC versus Indian Wells Valley Water District.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, so I do need a approval of the agenda with the amended closed session as requested for conference with legal counsel in regards to existing litigation. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Motion, second?
Second.
Roll call?
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Roger Rotnum.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
Ms. Breeden.
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Next item is public comment on any of the closed-session items which we'll be going into. Oh, did you want us to use the hickies?
No, it's quite all right.
Oh, okay.
We were fast on the draw. It's all good.
Okay. Next, public comment on any items of the closed session. Do I have any public comment from the floor? Seeing none, do I have any public comment from the phones? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close public comment on the closed session, and we will go ahead and adjourn into closed session or return to open session at 6:00 PM. Ladies and gentlemen, our apologies for being three minutes late. Obviously, busy times. We'll go ahead and call the meeting back into order at regular session at 6:03 PM. And if I can ask everyone to go ahead and please stand as we open our meeting with our Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd like to lead us in our dedication?
Sure.
Please join me in prayer if you can. Lord, thank you for giving us this day. Thank you for this little town of Ridgecrest where we live and cherish. Lord, at this time, I especially pray for unity in our community. Lord, no matter what issues we face, whether it is COVID, whether it is water, Lord, let your love bind us together, Lord. I pray for the hospital staff who are helping the COVID patients, the doctors and nurses, protect them from all evil, give them your strength, your protection, Lord. I pray for the school districts and guide them as to how they have to navigate through the difficulties, times we are facing. Lord, I pray for our state. I pray for the people who lost their homes in the wildfires. Lord, give them your comfort, your hope. Pray for our country, Lord. Let our country be a beacon of hope for other nations. Lord, as we discuss so many issues in this meeting, be with the council and let the decisions we make be useful and beneficial to the community. I pray for everybody here, bless each one of us, and use us for your glory. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Okay, next will be our attorney's report out of closed session. Mr. Libby.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. The City Council met in closed session to discuss the items identified on the agenda, which is anticipated litigation, as well as a conference with real property negotiator for the property located, identified by APN 081-293-07, as well as an item that was added subsequent to posting of the agenda, which is existing litigation Mojave Pistachios LLC versus Indian Wells Valley Water District. There is no reportable action on any of those items. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the report.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have a couple of presentations this evening, so I'm going to ask my fellow council members to join me at the podium, so we can recognize our employees. And we have one proclamation. If I touch the microphone, nothing good happens. I know. Each quarter, we get the opportunity to come together and celebrate our employees in five-year increments for their service to the city of Ridgecrest. Each of us will present for the five, 10, 15, 20 years, and I'll let Mr. Blades go ahead and begin.
Yes, in recognition of service for five years of service. I'll wait till I get to the microphone, so you can hear me. Narissa Wagner, could you please come down, so we can congratulate you? So, present you with this piece of paper, but it's nothing compared to what you give back to the city is huge. You've taken over Barksdale Rec. You've led strongly. The work you do is immense and it's immeasurable. Thank you. Oh, pictures. I'm pretty sure I blanked. Okay. Also, in recognition of five years of service, Mr. Joshua Beer, I don't know if he is present? Five? So, okay?
I'm going to do the 10-year service presentation. This certificate is awarded to Caesar Diaz in recognition of 10 years of service to the city of Ridgecrest. He's not there. Thank you for your service, appreciate it.
I get to do the 15 years because I know both of these people, and I'm trying to see if one of them is here. I know one of them is, I don't see the other one. Doreen, are you here? No, I don't see your hand. First one is recognition of service for 15 years of service to Doreen Morgan. And if you know Doreen, Doreen has been the face of building and permits for a very, very long time, and thank you for your incredible service. And then the second one is for my catalytic hero, Nathan Lloyd, on 15 years of service with the police department. And for those that don't know the story, the humor of running up to your office at 11 o'clock at night and finding the cop laying underneath your car, trying to match it up with the part, just as incredible, just recognition of what incredible officers we have and what incredible commitment they have to our community. Thank you, Nathan. Thank you for everything you've done. Thank you for 15 years. I'm supposed to hold. Wait, you want me?
No, no, I just didn't take that off.
So I have the honor tonight of awarding this recognition of service award to three individuals for 20 years of service to the city of Ridgecrest. And we will start with Rodney Robbs. Is he with us tonight? I don't believe so. Rodney, we thank you for your 20 years of service to the city of Ridgecrest. Next, we have Lain Ritchie. Is Lain Ritchie with us tonight? No? Okay, and again, we appreciate your hard work. 20 years is a long time to be working in the same job. So all three of these recognitions, I think, carry a little extra recognition. And next, we have Nick Humphrey. So not seeing Nick here tonight. Again, thank you, Nick, for your 20 years of service.
Could I ask for everyone to just, for all of our staff, one round of applause for all of them? Thank you for their continued service to our community. The second I get to do is we have a proclamation, and if I can have you guys hold for our photo after, that would be great. This is a proclamation of the city of Ridgecrest of California honoring Ridgecrest Grocery Outlet on their one-year anniversary. And if I can ask, is Adam and Christina here? There's Christina. So I'm going to have her come on up here, so I can embarrass her while I read all this. So, whereas the Ridgecrest Grocery Outlet celebrated its one-year anniversary on July 23rd, 2021, and will be commemorating the day with a special ribbon-cutting ceremony on Thursday, September 9th, 2021, importantly because they were unable to during COVID. And whereas owners Adam and Christina Cross and their team have been serving the Ridgecrest community for more than a year now, offering name-brand groceries including organics, fresh produce, and specialty items for 40% to 70% less than traditional grocery stores. And whereas Adam and Christina Cross have been committed to serving the Ridgecrest community with their partnership with the Salvation Army, together they have raised more than $6,200 through the Independence from Hunger Food Drive, in addition to product donations throughout the year. And whereas Grocery Outlet and the Crosses are committed to working with their local schools and nonprofits to support their initiatives all year long, now therefore be it proclaimed, the City Council of the city of Ridgecrest do hereby commemorate the Ridgecrest Grocery Outlet for their one-year anniversary and their pledge to serve the local community, proclaimed this first day of September, 2021. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Goodbye, Christina. Would you like to say anything? No? Okay, can I have us, I'll come forward for photo here better? Okay. Thank you again to all of our incredible staff, and congratulations to the Crosses. Those few businesses that opened last year definitely fought through the hardest times we can imagine in keeping those businesses open and building them, and congratulations to them on their one-year anniversary. Next item on the agenda is public comment of items not on the agenda, persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council will not take action on any item that does not appear on this agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes, and the public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name and address. And we will begin with public comment. Is there any public comment? We will begin from the floor.
Good evening, council. Tom White, Nick, and my address is on file. The last meeting, I came up here and I started talking about communication between you and the people, and I'd like to just continue that discussion. If you remember our last meeting, I gave you attaboys for some of the stuff that you're doing and trying to improve the communication with the people, and I think that's a great thing in having that discussion. Because tonight, I want to go a little bit further with the communication side, and that is how you handle the meeting in communicating what you're thinking and how you make your decisions. Okay? Now, what I'm talking about here is that you have a lot more information than the general public has in how you, in what makes you make a decision the way you do. Now, this is not negative in any way. This is purely informative and hopefully a constructive piece of advice. Because you have so much more information than a lot of the people do, sometimes when you have an item that comes before you as a council, you go through the discussion process pretty quickly. And when it's the simplest item that you're discussing, it's one thing to go through it simply, and then if somebody says, anybody have a comment? Nobody has a comment, and sometimes that's okay. But if you've got a complicated item in front of you, or maybe something controversial, and then you start making, trying to make a decision how you're going to react to that item, whatever it might be, and I'm not talking about anything in particular here, just as a general topic, that we would like to hear the reasoning you use to make the decision that you do make. Share your thinking with us. Instead of sometimes looking at your watch and say, are we getting out of here on time tonight, or are we getting a quick meeting? Take a little bit of extra time, and take the time, and tell us why you're deciding the way you are, whatever the topic might be. Now, this may sound kind of like, why should I even have to say this? Well, because that sometimes you do make decisions very quickly, very quickly. And I know that some of you have done a lot of research in getting to that decision and how you make that decision. So all I'm asking you is to just slow down a little bit, and don't be in such a hurry to just close the item and move on to the next item. Take the time to explain to us what you considered and how you came up with your conclusion. Again, this is not meant to be a criticism, but an encouragement to be just more communicative with us, so we understand how you're deciding and why you're deciding the way you did. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment from the floor? Any other public comment from the floor? Any other public comment on the phone lines? Seeing none? We'll go ahead and close public comment. Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. All items listed on consent are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and be considered in listed sequence, with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the item before action is taken. Oh, council announcements. I forgot council announcements, because I've turned the page. I forgot council announcements. I'm going to go ahead and move it immediately following the consent calendar, since I've already read through the items. Council announcements would normally follow public comment. I apologize, I turned the page. I did not follow the script. I will go and move those to after the consent agenda, if that's okay? Okay, thank you. So the next, the two items for consideration this evening is first, the approval of the draft minutes of the Ridgecrest City Council dated August 18th, 2021, and the second is the request for sponsorship of the Petroglyph Rock Art Festival. Do any members of the council wish to have an item pulled? Do any members of the public wish to have an item pulled? Hearing none. Do I have a motion for approval of the consent calendar as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. Apologies, so now I'm going to go back to council announcements. I apologize for that little snafu with the agenda. We'll go ahead and start from right to left.
I have none.
I have none?
None.
I'm just going to go ahead and make the one council announcement, which is, you know, this community had a tragedy on Monday. I thank the community for showing respect for the family that experienced that tragedy. No one ever, ever likes to hear that a small child has died and under the circumstances that they passed on, but the respect for the family is appreciated, and I do appreciate the community showing that to them.
None.
You have a few things. First one is there's going to be a veteran stand-down September 17th. That's where veterans can get info on counseling and free services. That'll be at Curmogy Center, 8:30 to 10:30 on the 17th. The other announcement is for Ransburg Old West Days. So if you want to be a vendor, or you want to be a part of it, or you just want to go up and enjoy it, get ahold of Neil and Holly Shopwell. That's it.
I might take the opportunity to add one more, since I forgot to mention it. For those who have young children, the Cub Scouts PAC 341 is working on a recruiting and carnival festival for the 19th of Sunday, the 19th of September. If you have young kids or interested in scouting, we'd love to see you come out. Yeah, we probably should. I would say, we say it in the announcements now, or bring it up later, but go ahead, Kyle.
Oh, no, just Parade of Thousand Flags is coming. I think that the detail, I mean, I think everybody knows, but it should be stated, so.
And if you have not participated in the Parade of Thousand Flags, it's an incredible, it's an incredible community event. If you're interested in participating, we can always use walkers, we can always use more people out. The bigger the better, and we'd love to see any member of our community out there for the Parade of Thousand Flags. If you are interested in participating and you're not part of a local community organization or group which is doing it, contact the IWV EDC. Rebecca McCourt will help you get organized. And if not, if you can't get in touch with anybody, show up by eight, by around, between 8:00 and 8:30 a.m. on Saturday, September 11th, and we'll throw a flag in your hand, and you can join us in going from the old bowling alley to the Freedom Park. Okay? Thank you, Kyle, for reminding of that.
Yep.
Okay, next item is discussion and action items. The first item is our discussion of the COVID-19 concerns. This was requested to be put on the agenda from the previous meeting, and this is an opportunity for us to have a discussion in regards to the current state of the community as it relates to COVID, as well as any other actions we wish to consider. This is designed to be an opportunity for council to ask questions and to get information from staff, as well as then to allow the public to offer public comment. I'd like to go ahead and offer first, an opportunity for staff to give us any insight, and then we'll go ahead and go to public comment, and then we'll go to council. Is that fine? Okay?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, City Council, this matter was brought to your attention by a group of citizens during your last meeting requesting that council support or issue a resolution in support or supportive of their effort to stop the mask mandates at the schools, as well as the forced vaccination of healthcare workers within the community. Both of those items are a matter of public concern. They do appear to be outside our jurisdiction. Obviously, you know, we cannot control what the hospital does with its employees. From what I understand, right now, that there has been no mass layoffs at the hospital. I do understand that the district is following the guidelines within the district. Their goal is to get all the students back into the classrooms. Under the guidelines, there is a directive that was mailed out to all the districts within the state that basically, you know, informed the districts that they need to, you know, follow the guidelines, and there were some inferred or specific ramifications if they didn't, in some parts where some teachers may lose their teaching credentials, that some school districts may lose their accreditation, and that as well as they might open themselves up to both personal liability. So I do believe this is a matter of concern. We do need to hear from the public, and I know that the council brought it back. My recommendation to council is to, you know, open up, listen to the public, and listen to their concerns, and in areas where we can, if it affects us, we can. I know that there was a concern with AB 455, which would have made restaurants and venues require proof of vaccination to enter their establishments. That draft has been dropped, and it may be picked up again in January. So I do understand everybody's concerns, but I still think from the staff's perspective is, I hear it from both sides, both the folks who believe there's a government overreach, and from the other side of the community that believes that the city's not doing enough. So I think no matter what the city does, we are going to be dividing our community. So I think that, you know, listen to the community on both sides. The folks that believe that, you know, there's a government overreach, that the mask mandate shouldn't be required for our students, nor the vaccination mandate for the healthcare workers, or that slippery slope of mandating it elsewhere within our community against those who feel that people should be masked and they should be vaccinated. So I think, you know, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I think you should open up and be open to listening to both sides of this issue.
With that, we'll go ahead and move to public comment and public discussion. Any members of the public wishing to discuss on this item, please come forward.
My name's Karen Taggart. My address is 1457 Leroy Street. I just wanted to find out from you guys what your stance is as far as the mandates, because again, a lot of areas are leaving it up to the local jurisdictions to deal with a lot of the mandates and things like that. I personally have been at my job for 12 and a half years. I've not been mandated yet, but I see it coming down the line. I work for a big corporation, and, you know, it seems to be, like I said, that those corporations are who are actually, you know, backing a lot of this. My other concern is, again, with the, you know, the dealing with it, like I said, on a local level. There's been a lot of, a lot of different areas, Montana, a lot of the different locations that have actually, like I said, left it up to the local authorities, the local government and that, and I was wondering if, you know, there's anything that can be done to stop these things. With the vaccine mandates, they've actually just come out with a study today from a Harvard professor who has proven now that the natural immunity, which, you know, there's probably a fairly good percentage of people here in Ridgecrest even, who've had COVID already, myself included, who have the natural immunity, which is far better than the vaccines, because at this point, the majority of people who are getting the new variant are vaccinated. And so that being the case, you know, it is absolutely government overreach to mandate a vaccine for anybody, especially one that has not been fully tested. It's been pushed through the approval, but it has not been actually gone through the steps that are required for an FDA approval. They just rushed it through to put it through, to make people feel better. Their logic for doing it, they said, was to be able to get more people to be swayed to get the vaccine. At this point in time, is there anything locally that we can do that will help our community with these issues?
So did you want to hear an answer from us now, or do we want to wait?
Absolutely, yes.
So, I was going to say, I think that, I know that, I can't speak for everybody, but I know that I would at some point like to make sure the public understands where I stand on this issue.
Absolutely.
I can't, I should probably ask the city staff to answer you directly on what we can and cannot do.
Right.
I don't want to speak out of turn.
And we also want to make sure that we don't do a long back and forth in terms of, in terms of public comment, so.
Right.
I believe that she asked, was our stance. I would say each of us could probably address that at council-level comments.
Sure. Okay.
I'd say, as always, we're going to get back and forth.
That was the first question, and the second question is, what can we do at this level?
Fair enough.
Well, from the city of Ridgecrest perspective, what we actually have control over, obviously we follow Cal OSHA standards when it comes to our employees, when it comes to how we handle infections within the worksite, we're mandated to do that. Currently, as of June 15th, there are no real mask mandates within the community where there would be a health department order for the police department to enforce. Our stance on that, from the very beginning, was more education and voluntary compliance. So that's where we stand at with the city and within our jurisdiction of what we have control over.
My other question would be then, who can we go to to actually address this? Because, again, as a community, it has, it has caused huge divides. But at the same time, there's got to be somebody we can go to at some level to address these concerns. You know, it's supposed to be the voice of the people. The people are supposed to be who's, who's running the government, in a sense, you know. And so that being the case, you know, who do we go to then next that we can talk to, that we can actually be heard and get some, some things done?
I think you have to understand where the orders are coming from. They're coming from the California Health Department and from the governor.
Right.
So the governor obviously has to follow what the legislature and the Assembly says. However, in this case, there are, he does have emergency powers that obviously have been upheld by the California Supreme Court. So really, it all boils down to, in a lot of cases, the California Public Health Department, as well as the governor, under his emergency orders.
Certainly, if something were to be issued by Kern County Public Health, that would certainly be a source as well, that we without a public health department can't dictate public health decisions in the same way.
Right. The other thing with that, though, sorry, I lost my train of thought. I was also wondering too with the, again, you know, if, if you guys, like I said, can't do anything about it, and again, even the mandates, the mandates are not law. The mandates are mandates. And they're, they do differ from law. And that being the case, again, you know, like, we've got a community here that's about to lose a bunch of jobs. You know, again, there haven't been layoffs yet, but they're coming. There's dates for everybody, the Seracosa College, the schools, the hospital. Like I said, I probably myself will eventually get to that point with my, my job as well. And, you know, again, it's going to affect our community huge, because there's not going to be any people that can go out and spend in our community, because we're going to be a lot of people without jobs.
I would say that if we're in that predicament, the rest of the states could be in that predicament. And I would assume that that would draw this issue to a head.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council and esteemed staff. My name is Carla Merrill, and I live at 1253 North Los Bostas Court, the best little cul-de-sac in town, and I'm a proud part of the We the People of Ridgecrest Group. From ancient times, far into the Middle Ages, walls were built around towns and cities to protect its inhabitants from theft and invasion. Residents had to return to the city gates before dark to ensure their safety. In our modern day, we no longer have walls made of wood and stone to protect us. We have people like you. Civil servants who seek the good of the community in which they serve and they live themselves. While you are not a legislative body and cannot make law, your decisions and words have tremendous influence in the lives of Ridgecrest residents. For good or ill, you affect the quality of life for the people living here in the valley. I am grateful for your public service, because you help our city remain orderly and safe. Unfortunately, the enemy is at the gates, and the sun is setting. Residents of Ridgecrest are being forced by unlawful mandates and requirements to wear masks and receive unproven vaccines against their conscience. Their children are being used as political pawns in the school system. How can this be? It's not that complicated. We have let it happen because we've become complacent and apathetic. We're in a battle to protect the livelihoods of our friends and neighbors, who want to hold on to their liberty and their integrity. We have fallen asleep when we should have been keeping watch. Please stand up for liberty and support the resolution which the We the People of Ridgecrest have put forward. It is imperative that you strengthen the walls of, of defense. The enemy is at the gates, and the sun is setting.
Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Williams. I live at 1421 Gold Canyon. I've been a resident of Ridgecrest for 29 years, so we cherish this community, my husband and I. We've raised our kids here, just really have found a lot of value. We've coached and just been a big part of the community, and so it's very dear to me. So I'm speaking here tonight because I care dearly about our community, just like you do as well. So I'll go ahead and start. So as I was preparing for this, to speak to you tonight, I wanted to clearly state my intention. My effort to construct my message, in my effort to construct my message, I wanted to learn more about the vision and goal of our city. I Googled our city council website, and to be honest, I could not find anything. I'm not saying that our city doesn't have a goal or vision, but I'm not saying, I'm saying that I was unable to locate it. However, when I, when I Google a community like Clovis, located in the Central Valley, here's what I find. One, provide orally and planned community growth consistent with the vision adopted by the general plan, and seek regularly, and regularly seek community response. Two, make Clovis the safest city in the valley. Three, provide for cutting-edge economic development, strategies to grow businesses, jobs, enhance the revenue base of the community, position the city resources, support businesses, and competing in today's global market. Let's see, what is that? Four, provide for financially sustainable city as community grows and looks to the long term. Next one, make Clovis a great place for all families to live healthy, work productively, learn continuously, play actively from generation to generation. Next one, provide strong, effective local leadership for the community, demonstrating a model for others, provide regional leadership, and influence decision-making through active participation in big issues. Next one, maintain and articulate the distinct community identity and community pride. Next, promote citizen engagement and develop a shared responsibility for community involvement. Last one, make Clovis a public sector employer of choice and ensure the team advances the city mission. So I stand before you tonight to ask you to clearly identify the goals and visions of our community. We are living in very uncertain times, and in an effort to build unity, which I know you all value, and you've all communicated that that's very important to you, I'm asking for clarity on that. Where does our city council stand on preserving medical freedom, our inalienable right? We have all heard the quote, if you stand for something, if you don't stand for something, then you'll fall for anything. How committed is our city council to improving the quality of life in Ridgecrest for all ages? If our city council doesn't value our liberties, including our medical freedom, how will our quality of life be affected? If Ridgecrest Regional Hospital continues to deny its employees their liberty to medical freedom, how will we all be affected? Employees, community members, everyone? Will our hospital have enough employees? Why would someone remain in the community for, for, why would someone remain in the community if one of our largest employers is unwilling to preserve our community members' freedoms? And I've been here a long time, the days of Drummond, seen the hospital grow, and I just think to myself, why would we dismantle that? I understand that you have no authority over the hospital, but you do have the ability to set the tone in our community. You do have the power of influence. We want businesses in our community to be committed to responding to the needs of our community members. We don't want employers to be in the business of removing liberties from our residents. People will leave this community, and when people leave, and when we, when people leave, and when people leave, or when we are unable to retain employees in our community, everyone's quality of life will begin to deteriorate. So when we see one of the largest employers in our small community disenfranchising a large portion of our community, whether it's employees or people who go there for services, it's concerning. So I'm asking you to clearly state the vision and goals of our community, and I'm asking you to clearly state your position on preserving liberties, including medical freedom. Finally, if you feel your hands are tied, and when it comes to medical freedom, then I'm asking you to clearly identify how you will make an effort to retain and fight for our medical freedom. I'm asking you to work together as a team and reach out to our county supervisors. Do they know where the city of Ridgecrest stands on this issue? Have you composed a letter? Have you made a statement to them outlining your commitment to our residents for medical freedom? Have you articulated to the county how eliminating medical freedom will financially impact our community and the quality of life? Finally, we need our community, we are, we need you to be committed to improving our community, and not taking a stand will not help our community in this quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Again, thank you, Ms. Williams. I want to be clear that I have no problem with allowing for the expressions after the speaker is done, but I am not going to allow for continued comment while the speaker is stating any speaker, not just anybody who says anything. I'm going to stop that speaker, and I'm going to call that person immediately from the audience. I'm sorry. It's fair for all. Any other public comment?
Good eve- Can you hear me? Good evening. My name is Shirley Kirkpatrick, and on a personal note, I'm glad that we're going to have Old West Days coming back. But anyway, I want to reiterate what was mentioned before, that the Western Journal on August 30th, and a new study in Israel, found that natural immunity protection developed after a COVID infection does considerably more to ward off the Delta variant than two doses of Pfizer vaccine. So this study, the study demonstrates that natural immunity confers longer-lasting and stronger protection against infection. So this is what concerns me, is that the fact that many people are becoming, you know, ill with, that are vaccinated with the Delta variant. And this is definitely a government overreach, and that's why many people are, are going to recall, hopefully, Newsom. But there's another interesting thing, and August 25th, the Associated American Physicians and Surgeons, AAPS, released a statement on FDA-approved letter for a COVID-19 vaccine. The COVID vaccine FDA approval, the FDA approval letter actually approves a biologics license application filed for, from BioNTech, Mainz, Germany, for its product, Quorminardi, I'm sorry, I kept pronouncing it, but you can look it up. It's not a, not current Pfizer vaccine. So what is interesting, that it's similar but not the same, so what, the vaccine right now, Pfizer, is not the one that was approved by the FDA. So AAPS points out the approval bypassed the normal advisory committee on part of the comment requirements. The FDA-approved package insert for Quorminardi contains a warning about the risk of myocarditis and post-marketing studies are required. There's no mention, however, of blood clotting or neurologic complications, and also that AAPS opposed vaccine mandates, supports the need for fully informed consent, and affirm the rights of patients to refuse medical treatment, even if it's recommended by their physicians. So this is what's troubling to me, is this, we're on the wrong side of history if we don't put a stop to this, because number one, this is still not really FDA-approved. Well, you might say it is or it isn't, you could do the research on that. Never in the history of the world are we enforcing a medical procedure on an individual, so that's definitely overstep. And so I'll go ahead and mention the mask thing, so I'm trying to get it all in one in five minutes, but the CDC had mentioned 85% of COVID mask 19 patients report always or often wear masks. So like has been mentioned before, people are getting COVID with or without the mask, and so that's a problem. And the problem also is with the mask, and anybody who's been in the medical field know that you, if you're going to wear a mask properly, there's proper ways of doing it, and you know, whether you take it off, you don't touch your face and all that stuff, you remove it and you, you throw it away. So they're not doing it effectively anyway. And as, it was already mentioned before, a group of local parents sent six face masks to a lab at the University of Florida requesting an analysis of the contaminants found in the mask, and the resulting found that five masks were contaminated with bacteria, parasites, fungi, including with dangerous pathogenic and pneumonia-causing bacteria. So that's a concern. Oh, and another thing, I'll try to be quick. There's an issue about evermectin. Apparently, in Ohio, a lady, a family of a lady sued the hospital because they were not giving her evermectin, and they won that suit after a big battle, and this ADO lady eventually became well and left the hospital and went home. And I, it's my understanding they don't prescribe that. Well, I've noticed on social media that there's a big concern, a discussion on that, and this is called logical fallacies. That is an FDA-approved drug that has worked for river blindness in a third-world country. And I believe Merck Med Company had donated to that company, or to that third-world country. And also, there's another thing to understand, that hydroxychloroquine has been used to treat lupus. So lupus, I guess, is a malaria drug, and so this other thing's supposed to be an antiparasitic drug. So it's not new for doctors to use things off-label, anybody who knows anything about medical, you know, the medical field. I don't pretend to be, I've worked for doctors, but I don't pretend to be in the middle, you know, that, not that knowledgeable in that area. But my point is, is there's ways to treat these things if you treat them immediately. So we're getting people that end up without any treatment, they end up in the hospital on the ventilator, when there's doctors, there's a doctor in, I guess he's Orange County, Riverside, he's been treating with evermectin and hydroxychloroquine, and he has not had a hospitalization. So the point I'm trying to make is, we're doing these mandates on a situation, a condition, an illness, a virus that can be treated, and this is definitely overstep. There's another agenda behind this, and it bothers me. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name's Kelly Karakis, 913 Carolyn Street. We often hear "America, the home of the brave and the land of the free," and we are in desperate need of brave leaders that are willing to stand up for our freedom. We have to protect our freedoms at all costs, whether you agree with people's choices or not, because it's the foundation of which this country was founded on. The idea of freedom, there are so many people that think it's frivolous, not important, to focus on it is selfish, but it is the literal structure that allows this country to be so amazing. Anything that comes along that inhibits your freedom, we should be very cautious. We should be very suspicious, because anything that comes along that inhibits our freedom is by definition anti-American. I don't want to repeat all that's been said, and I've got studies here and a lot that's already been stated, but I do want to, you know, the employers are putting out mandates that are coming down from the state, and we basically have the pharmaceutical companies making all the money, leaving the bills to the employers and the employees that are, are going to have to walk away from jobs. And so I'll just leave it with this. That's my three-page notes for you. A healthy society is one that empowers individuals with choice and freedom. We should never forget that the Constitution wasn't written to restrain citizens' behavior, it was written to restrain the government's behavior. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good evening. Three cheers for the young ladies' comments to you just seconds ago, and I'll, I'll second and third that supposed government bodies that do not protect their citizens' freedoms, they're simply acting like little sheep, and/or they don't know what they're even supposed to be about. If you think that our history is not filled with examples of smaller levels of government standing up against the tyrannies of supposed higher government, you haven't read much history, not of the United States, anyway. There's a principle called intervention. When your people are attacked, when their freedoms are trying to, they're trying to destroy them, which is evident by all this that's going on, you either sit back, like I said, like little sheep and say, well, the state says we have to go along with this, or you stand up and you say, no. One little word goes a long way. They used it at the Alamo, except I think it was four or five words, like, come and take it. They were only faced up by about tens of thousands of soldiers, and there was a couple hundred of them, but, you know, that was a logical decision. That made sense, didn't it, Mr. Strand, Mr. Lemieux, Mr. Bruin? Didn't make any sense at all. It was simply they weren't going to bow down and give up their freedom, even in the face of the worst odds. There are things this council can do to protect or come to the side of people in this city. You can tell the Kern County Department of Public Health, no. When you come over and threaten our businesses, like you let them get away with for the last year and a half, almost put them totally under, throw them out of business, you tell them, we're going to stand up with our citizens, we're going to tell everybody in town, ignore that silliness, ignore that destruction the county's trying to bring on you, and- county's trying to bring on you. And if you come over here and threaten our people, we're going to call our elected law enforcement officer, the sheriff, and have him come and stand in front of you and say, no. It's very possible Mr. Youngblood has the guts for it. I haven't seen anybody in this town in the last year and a half, half show that. I've talked with some of them, and they get evasive about stuff, that I want to bring delight. They won't take a stand. They won't be firm. Well, if you want to do that, then I guess we're wasting our time talking to you. Because there's really nowhere to go to people who don't have the principles that they ought to be operating under, firmly entrenched in their minds and their hearts, and know what they're about, something other than up here trying to increase the business in this town, or pretty it up and clean up the trash. How about protecting the people's freedom?
Marilyn, you know, I'll read you this quote that I read today. Refusing to comply with laws or executive orders or mandates passed contrary to the Constitution of the US or the Constitution of the state is not civil disobedience. It is. It is being obedient to the supreme law of the land. It is enforcing the supreme law of the land when the government is being disobedient. So when we have mandates that are not constitutionally derived, mandates, not laws, mandates, it is not being disobedient when we stand up against them. It is being obedient to the oaths that you took. If we comply with unauthorized laws, we actually encourage tyranny, and will subject every future generation to lawless government that we had an obligation to control. And I'll give you an example of a sheriff who has been bold enough and brave enough and courageous enough to do exactly that. This is from Cody Bowen, Sheriff of Union County Sheriff's Office in Oregon. Governor Kate Brown, I write to you today in hopes of opening dialogue and as a last resort to put you on notice, that we, the people of Union County, Oregon, have had enough. Enough of your overreaching mandates, enough of your bullying threats, enough of your dictating our state by fear. You have once again initiated what may consider to be unconstitutional mandate, requiring our children to wear masks while in school. You have gone so far as to threaten our teachers' livelihoods and their ability to provide for their families with fines and certifications if they don't enforce your mandates. You have backed our school board members into a corner even though the east side of the state has expressed a desire to have local control over these situations. Leaders listen to their constituents. Leaders listen to all of their constituents. You have continued in a line of politicians who ignore the will of the people on the east side of the state. You sit on the opposite side of the state and dictate with a heavy hand. You ramble off your orders to Oregon Health Authority and Oregon Department of Education, telling them to carry out your maleness orders or face the consequences of your threats. You are inflicting more damage to our children than any virus could ever do, and you hide behind the misrepan temptation that you care for all of us. You may care nothing about our children or the people of eastern Oregon. As Sheriff of Union County, I took notice to uphold the Constitution and stand up to defend the people of this beautiful county we call home. We have the God-given right to freedom and the God-given right to choose what is best for ourselves and our children. Let us do so. We will raise our children how we see fit. We will choose to wear a mask or choose not to wear a mask. We will choose to get vaccinated or choose not to get vaccinated. Your maleness dictates will no longer be tolerated. Sheriff Cody Bowen. That, ladies and gentlemen, is an example of real courage. You have the ability to stand like that. And no, you're not standing like that if you're bound to grant money or power that you think you have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comment?
Hello, everybody. I didn't prepare anything yet because I was hoping to hear from you first, but you're letting us go first, and then we don't get to comment on anything we hear. Hopefully sometime we'll get that opportunity. But anyways, I would hope that you guys could see that there are options that the city can take. I understand that you feel maybe this resolution wouldn't have been the right direction for you, but I'd like to hear options that you think you can do to represent all of the people. Because I understand that you think that there's some people who really strongly believe in the masks and the vaccines. But what are you doing for those that want to see medical freedom stood up for? And so if you can write letters saying, we have a group of constituents here, mind you, the vaccination rate for our community is only 36%, okay? So that means majority of the town at this point probably isn't really for the vaccine. And so I think also for the hospital board, since there's not public meetings for them, maybe if this is really about public health, we could talk about alternatives rather than just the vaccine and the scary statistics that they've derived up. And maybe talk about early prevention, early treatment. There's lots of information about that, like take vitamin D and zinc and vitamin C, get exercise, you know. You see people getting bribed with donuts and tacos to take a vaccine because this is supposedly about public health, which I don't think donuts and tacos really help people who are diabetic that are having comorbidity issues. So I think it's really important for you guys to take a stand and show what you're doing for medical freedom. Write a letter to the county supervisors. They're taking on the state right now because of oil permits. How much more important is medical freedom for our county? They have a county public health department, because I hear a lot about how we don't have a city one. Maybe we talk to that. Maybe we encourage our county health department to put out more flyers on early preventative treatments other than the vaccine and early treatment plans. So when someone turns, pops with a positive test, they would receive a handy little flyer that says, hey, ramp up your vitamin D, ramp up your vitamin C, ramp up your zinc. Make sure you're getting up and moving every so often so you don't have pneumonia set in. These are just basic things that we could be doing in our community that would actually make a real difference, and they wouldn't cause division if that's really what you're concerned about. And I think just also voicing your opinion, letting us know that you're not tyrannical dictators. I would encourage everybody out there listening, please vote yes on the recall, because that's going to be one of our most important things to get this tyrannical dictator out of leadership. So I don't care the five list of the other people that you vote for after that, but vote yes to get Newsom out of office. He has got to go. Write a letter to the California Department of Public Health saying, hey, you've overstepped. What authority do you have to, you know, threaten teachers' licenses? They're not the Board of Education. They're the Board, they're public health. They don't, they're not even over teachers. And so things like that. You can do things like that, even if you don't do it as a council. Do it individually as a council person. Council people, you have your First Amendment right. You can say, I'm writing to you today as XYZ. I'm not writing to you as, I am on council, but I'm not speaking for the entire council, and that's your protected right. I was, experienced that a few times when I was on council. And so do these things. And then share it on social media so that it provides some comfort to your local constituents, that we know that you're not going to be rounding us up and beating on our doors, saying, we need 100% vaccination rate. And help encourage those people who are taking a stand for their convictions that are possibly facing losing their jobs. Because that's a real concern for a lot of these people. And yes, there is religious exemption. And as you can see, I'm a big fan of Jesus. I hope you all have yourselves right with him. But if you don't, like religious exemptions don't work for everybody. And so that's another concern for some people. As much as I hope that they find Jesus, and I pray that you all do, I just really hope that you guys will take a stand personally if you can't do it as a
Any other public comment from the floor? And for the caller that's on hold, I do know you're out there. So I just want to make sure that I'm going to clear the floor, and then I'll take from the phone. I just want to make sure I acknowledge that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. My name is Mike Bossert. I live at 804 Valerie Street. I also didn't prepare any remarks and wasn't planning to speak. But I would just say that what hasn't been said is that the logic behind mandates, health mandates like this, would apply to most any disease, not just COVID. So I do believe it's a very slippery slope and threatening in that sense. These mandates require an emergency. So when emergency is declared, then you get emergency powers. Drugs or biologics can be administered under emergency use authorization only if there is an emergency. And so what is the emergency that we're facing right now, a year and a half after COVID came out? Initially, we didn't know what it was. Right now, a good example would be Duke University. Just yesterday, I read, based on the day before, having been published, and they have a site, they track this, they publish it, they have an outbreak. And what is the outbreak? The outbreak is of about 35,000 total staff and students at Duke University in North Carolina. And it's similar at UNC, by the way, university nearby. They have 35,000 of those, about 350 are currently tested as positive. So that's 1% this week. And of course, I hope you know that the PCR tests, polymerase chain reaction tests are dialable up to a certain sensitivity which can be controlled. They can be overly sensitive, generate false positives. And that was especially true last year. They changed it this year. But if they're getting cases, there's a case. There's a piece of a virus at least, or something similar that is multiplied to the point where it could be a trillion times more, and then it becomes detectable. So they have cases. But what are those cases? 350 people. They have almost all been vaccinated, all but eight people. They have only a handful, they didn't report the number, but I assume a handful means five or 10, of those 350 are experiencing any symptoms. No one's dying, no one's in the hospital. There are people who are experiencing mild cold-like symptoms to the number of a handful. So you're talking about probably 2% of a percent. So an extremely small number, five or 10 people out of 35,000. And if we didn't have the proactive testing, you probably wouldn't be aware of this fact. You wouldn't know that anything was going on. Five or 10 people would not create a wave. There wouldn't be news. It would probably happen anyway. That's normal. It would be covered up in the normal occurrence of annual flus and other respiratory diseases. Normally, by the way, they don't break out in the summer. So there are questions about the vaccine on that front. But the simple fact that if we have a mandate for something that mild, something that Simone Gold calls in the big scheme of human diseases is absolutely trivial. It's not downplaying what it has done to some people. But every day, 8,000 people do die in America, and overall health and our civil liberties is the overall concern I think we should address. Someone mentioned that the FDA has approved the vaccine. That's a very, it's a very tricky one to unravel, and I've done my best to do that. They have approved, there is a Pfizer vaccine. That's what is available in the US. It continues to be only emergency use authorized. The FDA in America approved what is only available in Europe, which is the Quorminardi vaccine. It is equivalent biologically. But the difference is that being not approved here under Pfizer, which is all we're going to continue to get available, it is indemnifying that company, Pfizer. So over in Europe, we've now approved it for them, but none of those countries where it's actually available, Quorminardi in Europe are approved. So nobody in Europe or America has an approved vaccine of that sort. The Pfizer-BioNTech or the BioNTech Quorminardi, they aren't available. So it's kind of a legal sleight of hand to say it's approved. It gives the premature, here in the US, that we have an approved vaccine, which is not available to us. But it also indemnifies the company Pfizer because it's still under EUA, emergency use authorization. There are probably a lot of other things we could say about that. But that causes confusion. Throughout, we've seen confusion, and that's a big, our law, US Code 21, Section 360BBB, is where the emergency use drugs are controlled. It says it requires informed consent, and that informed consent has to have information, obviously. It also has to be that you would know what the alternatives are advised, what the alternatives are. Someone mentioned ivermectin. It's, it's only $3. And Merck, who makes it, says that it has safety questions. It's been administered to 4 billion people. That's the kind of information that we need. Now they say it's unsafe. So that is an alternative. We would never have had an EUA. I'll quit, and thank you for your time.
My name is Cynthia Allen, and I live at 218 South Lilac. I would like to know why manager, city manager, say that we have to do the mandates because the state is requiring to it, because the CDC is saying this. I would like to know why. We have to abide by a public, a private, it's a public, it's a private organization, the CDC, and the public health obviously requires us to do studies and stuff. But we have not enough, or if it's not enough data to do, actually have the logic to say, okay, we have to follow this because we have enough people, five years the CDC has to have for these vaccines to be approved. So I want to know your logic behind, in what extent you have to obey these mandates, which are not law. And I'm not a lawyer, but I know the mandates is, you're not my mother. If it's my mom, I obey. But it's a mandate. It's not a law. And I think you've been in that seat for a while, and you've been seeing changes in laws and stuff. And they require certain people to say approve or not. So, and for Mr. Mayor, you're so worried about who talks in the audience, more so than who is really where it's on the table. And it's our lives, it's our jobs. So do something.
The issues you have with the law are outside the City of Richcrest jurisdiction. In other words, we cannot enforce the mask mandate at the schools, or whether they do or don't. That is the matter of the school district, as well as the hospital. Hospital is controlled by the Hospital is controlled by the state, through the Health Department. Their funding is, is dependent upon whether or not they're following the rules, and they have their regulators that have nothing to do with the City of Richcrest. So, there's currently nothing out there for the City of Richcrest to enforce. These are other entities that have to follow their regulators and within the law of their existence.
Thank you, sir.
Well, as I gather, listening to all this, this group feels that masking, social distancing, vaccination takes away from their freedoms, if it's mandated. I'm, I'm concerned about my freedom also. It'd be fine for these people to not do all these things, have the freedom to do that, if they were the only people in the world, but they're not. I'm here. And about 8 billion others. And I want freedom from disease, particularly COVID. And as I see it, this group wants to take away my freedom, my freedom to be safe from disease. When you guys don't get vaccinated, you make it more likely that it will be spread to me. I've been vaccinated, but it's only about 70% effective, as I understand it, as, over There are a lot of examples in the US law whereby people are required to give up their freedom to allow others to have freedoms. For example, nobody has the freedom to not stop at stop signs. Nobody has the freedom to run red lights. Nobody has the freedom to drive on the wrong side of the road. Nobody has the freedom to take the belongings of others. These are significant freedoms that we have all given up, in order to allow others to have their freedom from traffic accidents and freedom from losing our belongings. And any of you who've been in the military know that your freedom not to get vaccinated was taken away from you. Even George Washington, while fighting for freedom from the British, took away the freedom of his troops to not get vaccinated for smallpox. So, I wanted to say to the city council, that at least one resident in this town wants you to support my freedom to be safe from disease, by taking all the scientifically based steps to protect me from COVID, included mandated masking, social distancing, and vaccination. Please, don't pass any ordinance to prevent any business or schools from requiring protections from COVID. If you do, you'll be taking away my freedoms. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment from the floor?
Good evening, council. My name is Butch Zeisis, 1327 Summit. Leave you with a couple of questions, two of them the same, which I asked the school board. One of them's going to address the speaker that was just up here. Where is the science coming from that supports mask mandates, vaccines, any of this fear that we've been living in the last over 18 months? There's 40 years of mask science out there that go against what is being, we're being told to follow, by wearing a face diaper all day long. Major universities have done these studies. I think the most recent one I saw was in 2016. You can do an internet search and pull up probably three or four dozen studies that all negate the effect of wearing a mask to control any viral spread. The only reason hospital staff wore masks or wear masks, specifically surgeons, is to keep from infecting open wounds. So, I asked the school board, if you guys want to follow these mandates, make someone show you the science that they're saying supports what you're being asked to follow. Second question for you guys, do you take an oath to uphold the Constitution when you are mayor, city council? Do we, do we, is that just taken lightly? Do we understand what that Constitution says? Because I don't think a lot of us in this country, we take for granted the freedoms that we have, and the lives that were lost from the foundation of this country on, to let us live our lives that we've, that we've lived at this point in time. I didn't have anything prepared to say. I want to leave you with a quote. I believe it was Benjamin Franklin said, "Those that sacrifice liberty for a little bit of safety deserve neither liberty nor safety."
Is there any other public comment from the floor? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and take public comment from the phone lines. Caller, are you there? Caller, state your name.
Mike Finart.
Please proceed, sir.
I didn't have anything prepared, sir. Will we do with the call? Are we on?
Yes, sir. Go ahead and proceed.
Okay. Mike, my name's Mike Finart. I didn't prepare any remarks, but I want to tell you that I've paid attention to this topic from day one, and I've had a lot of time to research it. I think I even might have contracted COVID in December of 19. I don't intend to wear a mask, I don't intend to get the vaccine, and I want to share information with you, and especially the man that came up and complained about taking away his freedom. You have the freedom to get your vaccine. If the vaccine works, then what do you care? If I get my vaccine? That's a real simple question. The reason he cares is because people that have taken these jabs have been becoming sick, very sick. If you study what's going on in Israel, two reports have just been released today that confirm that the spike protein that is part of COVID-19, in which all the current vaccines instruct your body to produce, is by itself pathogenic. What that means is that's the cause of the inflammation in the circulatory system, and that's why you're hearing about people suffering from blood clots and messed up periods. You'll also learn that the VAERS database, which tracks reactions to vaccines, has very, very, under-published data. And I, last I heard, there was maybe 13,000 deaths. They, they could be underestimating by a factor of 10 or more. Today, or yesterday, and I'm going to, when I'm done talking, I'll give you some information that you can research for yourself, if that's okay. And I'll tell you what my opinion is here. I think the vaccine is a total failure, and ultimately, I don't think that they'll be using the vaccine strategy, and will go back to a preventative strategy, or a therapeutic strategy, using ivermectin, hydroxychloroquine, hydroxychloroquine, Z-Pak, and so on, which have been excellent, in terms of reducing the term of sickness, as well as the hospitalization rate. So, there's a, and that was one of the problems that everybody had, that these emergency use hospitalizations were granted to these vaccines before they considered that they were therapeutics, very cheap therapeutics. And, and on ivermectin and hydroxychloroquine, they're suppressing the news, the media, chat, pharmaceuticals, the CDC, they're suppressing any information, the Twitter, Facebook. If you want to talk about ivermectin or hydroxychloroquine, it'll get banned. So, so that ought to tell you something, because this government just lies to you. It's all lies. Remember the stop the spread? Remember the models, that they said, you know, millions of people were going to die? Well, that's not true. So, the bottom line here is, on the mandates, if you work for a company that's going to mandate you take a vaccine, you can provide information to your CEO, and let them see the evidence of the damage that these vaccines are causing, and if they force you to take the vaccine, and you get sick, or you die, they're criminally liable. Today, I sent an email to the CEO of Richcrest Regional Hospital, and I'll read it to you.
Sir, you're out your five minutes, sir. You're out your five minutes, I apologize, but I have to try and move the meeting forward. If you have any final comments, I'm more than happy to hear them.
Well, I, I put them on notice, I sent them the information, and my recommendation is that if anybody at the hospital gets sick from these vaccines, any employees from these vaccines, you have legal recourse, and if he's on notice, he's criminally liable, as well as the board of directors. Thank you.
Do I have any other public comment on the phone lines? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring discussion back to the council. Thank you for, you know, the, I think we have about 12 or 15 of you that stood up. Thank you very much for, for offering us your opinions and your information. You asked us several questions, I hope we can address those. I'm going to let, is there anything you want to address first, before we, we individually? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and go right to left, and Peggy, I'll let you go ahead and start with any, any comments.
I thank you all for coming. I appreciate what you had to say. I've learned some things from what you've said. I like the idea of preventative. I don't know how you prevent COVID, and so, if somebody has some ideas on that, I would be interested in having you share that with me and with us. Email it to us. I don't know what they are, and if they are there, I would be interested in knowing. I do not know how one, as I told you last time, in 1954, my mother died of polio, and shortly after that, the polio vaccine came out. And I don't know of many polio deaths now. I don't know of many small back, small, smallpox and other measles, rubella, and many of those deaths that happened after the vaccines. Do I like the idea of having to be vaccinated? No. Do I like the idea of having to wear a mask? No. But I do think we have a responsibility to each other, and that responsibility is interpersonal. It is not a governmental job for me to make sure that we react the best to each other in the best, most efficient way we can. I do not think it is in our jurisdiction. I have read everything I can find on it. I do not know that it is in the authority of the City of Richcrest to say you must or you may not. I am certain it is in my responsibility as a person to do what is best that I can individually, for each and every one of us to prevent and take care of our citizens the best way we know how. And in doing that, the most important thing we can do is take care of each other, understand the needs of each other, understand the responsibilities that I have as an elected official and as a human being, to live in this community. And I do not think it is in my power to say you may or you may not. If I did, then I would say write letters. That is what one of you said, and I appreciate that. Those are very, very important, and not to the City of Richcrest, but the people that have the authority to make those decisions. It is our county and our state. Do that, and I thank you very much. And anything you want to say or send to me, please do. It's important that I listen and learn more fully, and understand my responsibilities to you. Thank you.
So, I want to concur and thank everybody for, for being here tonight and voicing your concerns to us. This is a very important issue for this community. I don't like to see the divisiveness that, that it brings on a community. I'm going to break it down into a couple of issues here that I wanted to discuss tonight. We were asked by the, the first speaker tonight to, what is our individual stance, or, or, you know, I take that as an opinion or stance on, on these issues. But first, I want to talk about the mask requirement decisions by the, the school board. I've tried to spend a lot of time talking with individuals in the community, be it parents, the children, the teachers, and, you know, having them, you know, voice their concerns and their ideas about what's going on and how it's affecting them and the, and the children. I'm going to use my 10-year-old grandson as an example. I've talked to, to a lot of the kids. The overall 100% consensus with the kids is, they're 100% happy to be back in school. If we look back to where we were this time last year, they weren't in school, it was a mess. And today, they're back in school, they're happy. I asked my grandson, he's 10, and I said, are you happy to be back in school? And he goes, oh, yeah, I'm happy to be back in school, grandpa. And I said, so, how's it going? Good, good. How, how do you, you have to wear a mask? Yeah. Well, you like wearing a mask? No. Do you have to wear it all the time? No. Don't have to wear it when I'm out playing. And so, I said, do you think wearing a mask is, is okay for now? And he goes, yeah, I don't want to go back. I'm caught, caught me off guard. I said, go back? I said, wearing? He goes, last year. I don't want to go back to that. I thought, wow, these kids are happy to be back in school. I said, do you think it's good to play, let it play out for a little bit? And he's, his answer is yes. So, I personally don't like the masks, the concept behind them. The studies that date prior to COVID, I put more faith in, because they were done without a bias toward COVID. As stated by one of the previous commentators, there's literally dozens of peer-reviewed studies on the use of paper and cloth masks, and the prevention of influenza and other similar viruses. And the vast majority of all those that I read concluded that they weren't effective. So, whether I agree with it or not, I agree with the school district's decision and where they're at with this, because I think it's most important that we look outside of ourselves and what's important for, for the community. So, with that, I, I stand with where the kids are at in school right now. I'm happy that they're back in school. I think we should, as a community, observe and watch closely what's going on, how the conditions move through the, the next few months, which is, you know, the normal cold and flu season. I think we need to reassess and, and, and look at, you know, how we're going to handle things in, in the future, and be ready to make those decisions. So, in a nutshell, that's, that's, that's all I have to say about, about that. Secondly, when it comes to vaccines and mandates requiring vaccines, a year ago, approximately, I don't remember the exact month, but it was when the vaccines first started to come into the, the picture, we had our Kern County Health Department here, and Matt Constantine, and I believe the hospital representative, discussing COVID and, and where we're at. And I asked a question that had come to my mind, and I was, you know, concerned with. If a person, and I asked this question, I said, if an individual gets If a person, and I asked this question, I said, if an individual gets the vaccine, can that individual, if they come in contact with another person who is carrying the virus, can they contract the virus? If so, how long can that virus live in this host? And during that timeframe, can they transmit the virus and become a transmitter, even though they've been vaccinated? And it was kind of quiet for a moment, and then his comment was spoken like a true epidemiologist. He said, well, if I recall, the comment was, basically, we don't know could be, and so here we are a year later, and we see people choose to get a vaccine, which is, that's their choice, and it is their right to have that choice. But we're seeing breakthrough cases with vaccines. We see that more and more of people, the Israeli situation's been mentioned. I've studied that, because they were one of the most highly vaccinated countries in the world, and they were beginning to have breakthrough cases. So we know that people can contract the virus after having had a vaccine. We know that they can spread that vaccine. So a lot of things, I base my decisions on objective clinical data that makes logic and sense. It doesn't make sense when they say, well, you know, 25% of Los Angeles's new cases were breakthrough cases. Let's put these people back into hibernation and make them wear a mask. So you take someone who now you know can carry the virus and be asymptomatic, slightly symptomatic, maybe full-on symptomatic, and you tell them to, you know, go back into, you know, semi-isolation and wear a mask, to me, that doesn't make sense. So because you're going to be breathing and hyper-saturating, your nasal, oral, pharyngeal areas, wearing a mask, you watch people, I tend to watch people wearing a mask and count how many times they've touched their mask and touched other things when I'm around them. I'm like, hmm, it's a lot. You can observe it yourself. So now we get to, initially, information comes out that says, well, the vaccine will stimulate your body's antibodies to be, your body to produce these antibodies that are geared toward the spike protein, and that's better than your antibodies that will be formed when you acquire the virus and go through natural immunity, because your natural immunity will attack the multiple different aspects of the virus. I thought, okay, I'm hearing that. So now we find that, you know, we have these breakthrough cases, we see that, excuse me, new studies coming out show that people that acquire COVID and undergo natural antibody production, that their antibodies are actually robust and durable and long-lasting. And this is new information. This other information was months ago. So as more information comes out, it's changing the game. It's changing how we base our thoughts on and how we want to decide, do we want a vaccine or do we not want a vaccine? They both have risk. Both sides have risk. It's a choice. You know, some people, you know, you should consult your healthcare professional or that. Well, yeah, that's a fact. But both sides have risk. Both sides, we should have, this is my opinion, we should have a choice to make that decision. And so it doesn't make sense to force someone to get a vaccine that has acquired COVID, that has developed natural antibodies, and is doing well with it. I don't see the logic there, so I question that. When it comes to testing, they want to test everybody. We want to test, force the people who don't get the vaccine to be, undergo testing. Well, that might have flew through the window earlier, but now we know that people that get the vaccine can be carrying COVID. They could be asymptomatic and out spreading the virus just as much as the person who is going through a natural process. So why are we segregating an individual who chooses not to get the vaccine to get tested abnormally disproportionate to the person who got a vaccine, who is still, who can be carrying the virus? Folks, you have to educate yourself as much as you can. You've got to sit back and look at and ask, why? Why are we being asked to do these things? You know, what are the ramifications of it? What are the risks? I can tell you that in a country where we live on our freedoms, we have a freedom of a group of people out there, people can make the choice to abort or not abort a child. That's a big decision. We can't make that decision whether or not we want to get a vaccine. These are just things that I'm, you know, playing out in my mind. So I think you can tell from my discussion where I stand on this. I think it's a choice. I think it's something that is an individual choice to make based on what's most healthy for you as a person. And so anyway, like I said, I appreciate everybody coming here tonight. I think we, you know, the discussions that we have, you need to, as our manager said, we don't have the legal authority to enforce it. We could tell you to go do something, but we're in the same boat we are, that we were in last year when we were asked to do the same thing. And so when your beautician and your state board sends you a letter, says, if you do this, you're going to lose your license, what good does it do for us to tell you to go out and do that? Now, you have a choice. Everybody has a choice, they can do what they want, pay the consequences. But we, as a council, have certain jurisdiction legalities that we, you know, we have to follow in. I say go to those organizations or employers or those people that, you know, that you are directly affected by and take your case to them. You know, the letter writing that was brought up, I think you as individuals that, you know, have formed this group, take that, do the campaign writing. I know from past campaigns that were done in this town, a lot of signatures were garnered for a different reason. Those could be garnered for your cause. Take it to the sources that those people have the ability to make a decision or change on it. So anyway, I think I've rambled enough. Yeah, that's where I stand on it.
Well, let me reiterate again, my thanks for everyone who came out. We made sure this was on the agendas because we wanted to have the discussion and because we, despite social media and rumor mills and everything else, our personal opinions up here are maybe very, very different than what people make assumptions on. For those people that don't know, I serve as chairman for Ridgecrest Charter School as well, so I'm 100% well-aware of what the CDE mandates were in regards to schools. I'm well-aware of how it would have affected our ability to function and fund the school. I'm well-aware of what those educators and teachers are facing, and I realize that there's a lot of people that feel passionately about it. So let's tell stories. My kids are homeschooled, and I'm the chairman for Ridgecrest Charter School. Why? Because that's what was important for me and my wife. That was our choice. We made a choice. But that was our right to make a choice, same as anybody else's. But the school district does not have a right to make a choice against serving all of the children of this community. You have a choice as a parent to take your child and homeschool them, or to put them into a private school that doesn't require masking or something else. You have that choice. But the school district does not have the choice to simply choose to ignore its guidance provided by its governing agency for the sake of making a point, for the sake of one side winning an argument. They can't do that. So I want to commend Mr. Astash and Marion, who I work closely with, as well as the school board. They are faced with very difficult decisions, and they're making the best decisions for the entire group they serve under the circumstances. So let's talk a little bit more about personal status. I'm vaccinated, my wife has an immunos disease and she isn't. I take a risk every single day coming home, that I could be carrying it or not carrying it. But I choose to because I care about my four children and my family. I made that choice. I made a personal choice. Do I love my wife any less? Do I care about her any less? My brother's an emergency surgeon. Do I care about him any less when he says, go get this and go get that? No. But my father, who refuses to it because he's a Vietnam vet and believes on this side, do I love him less? Do I care about him less? No. Because there are no good sides to this issue. This is division at its best. It is not individual mandate, is not individual decision. If it is individual, then choose to make the choice that you want to make. Perfect example, if Ridgecrest Regional Hospital upsets you with their mandate, choose not to go to that hospital. Choose not to use their services. Choose to suffer the consequences of that choice. That is a choice. Everything is a choice. They're difficult choices, and they're not good ones, and we don't like them, but that's a private business. And I use that argument about private business so importantly because I understand it. I manage one. As a private business, if I make choices that upset my people that I want to serve, then I suffer the consequences of it. Those are the two worlds. But up here, personal opinion and public duty are not one and the same. They're not interchangeable. I represent the 29,217, according to the last census reading, of this community population. That's the city of Ridgecrest. Of that, 26 and a half are under the age of 18, 7,742. That means there's 21,475 voters in this community and 21,775 adults, all which could make choices, make independent choices. And I have to represent all of them. And earlier, and I'm going to address, this is, to be clear, I took notes for every single speaker, and this is going back to Karen's, what is our stance? You asked us to individually kind of present our positions, and I'm doing just the same as the previous speakers. But the fact is that right now, we have heard from this group, the same as I have heard from others who are in a different opinion, and I have heard from today, let's see, three, seven, let's say 12 to 15 speakers today. You'd say 11 on one side, one on the other. You know, we want to talk sides. And I also got nine phone calls or emails against it. So that represents in total 0.09% of the population. One of the speakers mentioned the 1% as Duke University's argument that, you know, it's really not that bad. Well, then 0.09% of my community has spoken up. Now, I'm not trying to diminish your speaking up because it's important, nor am I trying to say that it doesn't matter. I'm simply stating that if there is a larger effort needed, then start that larger effort. Ridgecrest, the city of Ridgecrest, has no active mandates in place. You are screaming at the people who have no active mandates in place. We had during the entire course of COVID, no citations issued for non-compliance. We had no arrests made for non-compliance. Your community is more united than you think it is, but if we want to take a rod, a hot rod, and drive it between us and divide our community again, we can choose to do that. But it is my public duty to prevent that. Not my personal opinion, my public duty to keep this community on a road that is positive, on a road that is worked towards building this community, on a road that puts us in a position to ensure that 10 years from now, 20 years from now, 30 years from now, those same people that are sitting in this room appreciate and continue to have the quality of life that they experience today. That's the difference between personal opinion and public duty. Each one of you gave impassioned, incredible remarks. You know, leaders need to listen to all of their constituents. Marilyn, I agree with you. I need to listen to all of my constituents. All. There are two sides. This is not a contest of who wins. Winning this argument is only satisfying your personal psychological need to feel like you win. There's no winner or loser on either side of this thing. People are passing away. People have lost their life. People have lost family members. People have dealt with that. People have also had their personal freedoms intruded on. People have also had a sense of being trampled on by their government. I don't debate that on either side, but there is no winner or loser in this. There are incredibly difficult processes here involved. This council, and I know for myself, I want to hear from you, and I continue to hear from you. If you asked to see me or to talk to me, the first words you got were absolutely. But I do stress that we have a duty to respect all opinions when it comes to this issue. It is not one side can be right and one side can be wrong. That's my personal opinion.
I just want to thank everybody for coming here and expressing your opinions. I know this is a very hot topic. I am supportive of freedom of speech and freedom of choice. We, the people of Ridgecrest Organization, has a right to protest the COVID mandates, no doubt about that. But at the same time, whatever we do, it has to be beneficial for our community. My wife is director for a child development center, and she manages over 100 children, ranging from six months to five years, and most of them have to wear masks. I don't know how, I know how difficult it is for her to manage that organization during these tough times. So three-year-old wearing a mask, you cannot control it. They throw it down, they put it back, so so many things happen. But she has a heart for the children, and it is not her choice to put masks for those childrens. The CDC has given a guideline to them, so she has to follow. So there is no option for her. The same way Ridgecrest Regional Hospital, the school district, they are mandated to have vaccinations and masks, especially Ridgecrest Regional Hospital. They need, I think all the staff need to be vaccinated by the 23rd of this month. So if that doesn't happen, they are at risk of losing their license, they are at risk of losing their funding, they are at the risk of having, being penalized. So we should think whether we want our hospital to go through this process. So we have to be very careful in what we do and how we circumvent these problems and the choices we make. So the same way the school district, if they don't follow the mandate, they are at risk of losing their funding. So my request is make best use of your choice so that we are all doing the best for our community. I know most of you are Bible-loving people, so I would say, whatever you do, do it for the glory of God. Thank you very much.
So I prepared a great deal to read back to you because this topic comes up constantly. I think there's not a person that I run into, it's almost every single person, COVID, mask mandates, vaccines, how do the vaccines work? Are they working, are they not? So it's a constant conversation. I took two pages of notes, but I don't think that you came here to hear me ramble on much more than you've heard all night. I think that you probably came here to hear how we just personally feel and where we stand. I think what you have heard tonight, there's a lot of things that we can't do, and those are all true statements. There is a lot of things that we cannot do. I wish that we could. You heard Lindsay, rightfully so, call out to recall the governor, and I don't, I can't say I don't disagree with that. If there's one thing that can be done to change the course of where we're at right now, it's to remove the governor. So my personal feelings are that we currently, as we live in society right now, we are watching the slow erosion of civil liberties all over the place. I think this is one more step. That's my personal feeling. I think this is one more brick of a slow erosion. I think that we, as somebody else said, you know, if you quoted the famous Ben Franklin quote about not deserving, you know, freedom. And I have to say, it's because we live in a safe society, right? It's just, we're probably safer now than we've ever been. We live in a comfortable society. I think that we are all seeing now the cost of that comfort. We're seeing the cost of that safety. And we have people who, you know, elected representatives up at the state And we have people who, you know, elected representatives up at the state who believe that they're doing the right thing. I can't say that I agree with that. So I'll just state plainly that, I think we need, oh geez, that was awful. Sorry about that. I think that we need to keep our eye out. I think we need to keep actually watching where our civil liberties are going because this is, this isn't the only place. And we give them away constantly on our cell phone. I mean, we just left Afghanistan, and I haven't seen anybody talk about the Patriot Act being removed. So, you know, there's a, there's a lot to keep our eye out for. This isn't the only one. What can we do? Lindsey, you asked that several times. Well, because we met personally, so that's not, that's not lost on me. But it's all been said. The proper letters, the right movements, the movements you have, the energy you have, it can be turned positive and pushed in the right direction. I believe that. And you have, you have a supportive, I can't speak for everybody else, but you have a pretty supportive city council. I think, I think I thought that was apparent. I think I thought that we had made that clear through our actions, but maybe we hadn't. And you know, after having a discussion with Lindsey, I think that was probably true. She said that you guys needed to hear it. You needed to hear how we felt and where we stand. So, I'm stating plainly, I'm not a big fan of mandates of any shape or form. I've actually received a few seatbelt tickets, Jed. I'm just, I'm just not. I'm just not. And I have a very contrary attitude when somebody starts pushing on me. So I understand how everybody feels. That's not just lip service. So, I will quit rambling on. And now you guys know where we all stand. You understand what we can and cannot do. And I hope everybody leaves here feeling more comfortable about where the city council is. Thank you.
Thank you, Cal. I'll bring it back. Is there any other council discussion?
There were, so I have no more discussion, but there were a few people that called me today and a few days ago. I've received a bunch of emails. I don't know if anybody wants to hear. There was other public comment, and I said I would read it. One individual expressed that she wanted to respect everyone's feelings, but did not like the city government being involved. She hopes, she hopes that people and groups follow their legal avenues to fight what they, to fight for their cause. And then I received at least, I don't know, geez, I think some of us received all of them. Maybe they came to all, there was a lot of emails that came. I don't know if it was just from this group or other people, summarizing exactly what was said here tonight. So, I just want to make sure that people didn't feel like they, they weren't being heard, or that their opinions weren't going to be expressed. I can't, at least for myself, I'll say that if you have something, not just this council meeting, but any other council meeting, something that you want to put out in, in comment and you want it read, I'll gladly do that for you. I'll keep it anonymous. Several of these people asked to be anonymous because they just didn't want their name thrown out. And I should have added that I admire everybody coming down here. It takes a lot of courage to step up to the podium. It takes a lot of courage to let people hear your voice because you know it's recorded. You know, people are gonna, people are gonna skim it out, they're gonna cut and paste, and it's a, it's a risk, it's a gamble. So thank you for coming out here, and thank you for letting us hear your thoughts and your opinions.
Okay, now I'm done. Okay. Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to item number six. Item number six is a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council approving a purchase and sale agreement with William G. Gifford Trust for parcel located on Moyer Avenue, APN number 41904210.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So I am here tonight with a purchase and sale agreement for Moyer. This was previously brought to you because we did have an offer that was accepted previously, but the seller canceled the sell. So this property was surplused, and it went through the surplus procedure that the state mandates that we do, and we circulated the notice after the surplus for 60 days. We received no public entities or housing agencies that were interested. So we did list the property, and this is the second time that it's come to you. So the offer is for a residential mobile home lot on Moyer, and it is for $10,500. The offer is from the adjoining property owner. Part of this property, these two parcels have a pedestrian way between them. So part of the purchase would include vacating that pedestrian way. It's not used. So if, part of it is that we would go through that process, which would come back to council for approval, but the land seller would be contingent on that.
Thank you. Is there any council discussion?
Not too much. I'll just ask quickly, what's your recommendation?
Yeah, staff would recommend that we sell it for the 10,000, or, yeah, 10,500, and then we will bring back a vacation. We don't have any other offers, so, and this is the second time that we've had to sell it, so.
Thank you. Yeah, I have no further, this seems pretty cut and dry.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Hearing none. I'll bring it back to the council. Any additional comment? Or do I have a motion for approval of the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Second. Motion and second.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Thank you much. Heather, don't move too far, because item number seven is a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council approving a purchase and sale agreement with Carlos Herrera Marquin, I hope I said that right, and Esmeralda Herrera for parcel located on Boston Avenue, APN 08129307.
So again, this is a property that we went through the surplus, it was circulated, we had no interested parties. We did accept an offer previously, and that offer, again, the seller backed out of that sell. So this is the second time it's coming to again, and this is for the same price as the original offer that was accepted, which is $13,000. And this is a residential, so a single-family residential lot on Boston Avenue. Staff would recommend that we accept the purchase and sale agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any council discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to council. Do I have a motion for approval of the resolution as presented?
Motion approved. Say it.
Mr. Bruin.
Okay, next item is mine.
Five ayes, motion carries. Sorry. Sorry, it was hanging, but your vote was hanging back a little bit.
Oh, I know, it's good, sorry.
Yeah, no, it's good. Thank you.
Yeah, don't leave me hanging. The, I'm gonna go ahead because we've already, we are at about eight, yeah, we are at 8:00 PM. We've been going about three hours. I'm going to go in the join us for about a five-minute break for everyone to have a, a quick stretch and bathroom break before we move on to the next item. We've got five more items for this evening, so we will go and reconvene. I'll give it 10 minutes at 8:10. Thank you.
8:10. Good job.
Thank you, Gary. Welcome back. Thank you for indulging us a small break to stretch our legs and check in the family. We are going to resume our agenda with action item number eight, which is discussion to establish a key to the city program, which provides acknowledgement to members of our community who often go unrecognized. This item was brought forth by me, and, and again, this is part of, again, communication and promotional strategies that I see as opportunities for this community. My recommendation is to establish a key to the city program. Essentially, what that would be is something where we each have, as an elected official, an opportunity to nominate a individual who we feel has gone unrecognized by the community. And I'm gonna give you an example of one that was brought before me as, as an example of what I'm, what I'm meaning. We give the lifesaving awards to our officers when they do an incredible job out in the field and save, save lives. But I haven't ever seen a public citizen up here recognized for that same, that same going above and beyond to save a life. I'm sure it has, maybe I just haven't seen it recently, but my, that's where my brain went into thought process, was how do I recognize somebody, not the people that work every day in, in our community groups or community leaders, but more those, those individuals in our community who just emulate what Ridgecrest is and go above and beyond. And in this case, I know the gentleman broke through a door, found the gentleman had a heart attack on his keyboard, began lifesaving measures, and was able to maintain those measures until EMS and other groups were able to get there. And he essentially worked to save that, that gentleman's life. And that's where the impetus came from. And the second impetus comes from the idea of we are working on this communication and promotion mentality of what, how do we change the dialogue about what Ridgecrest is? And in that effort, one of the best ways is to celebrate the little things. We spend a lot of time arguing about the big things, which is a perfectly appropriate thing to do, but we fail to celebrate sometimes the little things. And that's what the purpose of this would be. It's a very, very low cost. I'm talking about buying a couple plaques and keys. The idea is that every council member would have an opportunity to nominate a person every two years, and I did it based on the mayor election cycle so that if you are a council member elected to a four-year term, you'd have two nominations over the course. And if you were mayor, you'd have one nomination, but two in the course of the four years. And the idea is, obviously, if we have somebody who we also want to recognize, then we put them up and we recognize them. It's not, it's not this hard and fast rule. It's the idea of, we need to continue to celebrate the good in our community and make sure that that is part of our communication strategy over and 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 over again. Because that's how we're going to change the mentality and dynamics and, and even some of the pieces of culture that are an important part of us moving the community forward. So, my, this was my recommendation. I would welcome any discussion. I broke down why and love to hear from you.
I think it's a good idea. I would even go one step further. We can have the picture of the recipient on our city website.
Absolutely.
So that would give more recognition. There are so many people who, they don't like to be recognized also in our community. They do a lot of, but, so it's a good idea. I fully agree with this.
Any other discussions?
No, it seems this is another one that's pretty easy for me. I, I think that people deserve, I mean, there's a lot of people in this community running around doing a whole lot of good things, going unrecognized. I can think of, right now, several off the top of my head, but I'm gonna reserve them so you don't try to steal them.
The other inspiration was, was Renee Westlock, who, from the redistricting perspective. Renee, if you're out there listening, which I know you are, I love you to death, but you have an email gift-for-Gab, and, but the, the fact is that when I look at how much effort she put in on behalf of this community with no, no exchange or, you know, even so much as a pat on the back, that was, these were the type of examples that came to my mind, is those people that consistently go above and beyond for the community need to be recognized.
I like it. I just want to say there's a whole lot of right things going on in the community and in the world, and I think that unfortunately, media and, you know, it's easy to target the one bad thing or the, you know, negative aspects of, you know, whatever's going on. But I like the idea of promoting the good in, in, in the community. So I think it's a great idea.
I was, I was only gonna say, I was gonna add that I'm wondering if we're doing, I don't mean going like, geez, to an extreme, but are we doing enough in recognition? And maybe that's something, I mean, because I know, I'm sure we're gonna open this up to the public, maybe there's another recommendation I'm not thinking of, but.
Again, we're doing enough for sure.
Absolutely. What I'm saying is, I think, thanks for bringing it up, thanks for coming up with it, and I know you, you did the work on this. I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there. Sorry, go ahead, thank you.
I don't have no problem with the concept at all, except for possibly, a few years back, there was some idea about naming a park after somebody without getting any names or anything like that. And all of a sudden, there was a bunch of people that didn't like that particular name to be put in for the park, and then the council come up with, I think, kind of a position that they weren't gonna name parks after people. And I don't know if that's still in effect or not, but of course, we're not naming any parks at this point. But I remember the discussion, and it got kind of weird, right? And anybody that was around know what I'm talking about. But I guess my question would be is, I would hope it wouldn't happen, but what if Scott proposed somebody that three of you didn't think should get one? Or what kind of chicken balancer are you gonna have on the awards? That's the only thing I would ask. I'm not picking on just Scott, but.
It would be, it would be placed, a nomination summary would be provided to the city clerk, and it would be placed in the consent agenda, so a council member would have the right to pull that item from the consent agenda to raise any concerns if they felt that it
Didn't reset my time. Good, I wanted to take five minutes anyway. Mike Neal, one thing to point out in this, and I have to go back to my days of working, coaching soccer teams. There was a time period, right about back in those days, when it seemed like if any kid got an award, all the kids had to get an award, because, you know, you couldn't make it, any of them feel bad because they didn't, he got one and I didn't get one. Well, those are children we're talking about, but, but, you know, a lot of times, adults are just big kids in a lot of respects. My point is, a lot of people in this town, I've been here over 40 years, and I've known a lot of them. I knew the one very well, his name is on the end of one of these pews, who came down here a lot of time. He put in a lot of time just because he felt it was his duty. And I suspect most of the people around this town who are working in selfless manners, not just, you know, providing for themselves and enriching their own lives, they're trying to do things, sort of the city are just doing it because they know it's the right thing to do, and there's, there's honor and there's character in doing what you know needs to be done just because you know it needs to be done and it's the right thing. So, careful when you come up with somebody you think you want to give this award to, make sure you figure out, without embarrassing them in some fashion, that they even want an award, okay? If it were kind of me, okay, big laugh, I know you guys aren't gonna nominate me, I would say, no, thank you. I don't, I don't do this. I mean, coming down here, involved in city council, and supporting what I thought was right for 15 years, to be known or get fame or honor or anything else for that, did it because I learned that it was a citizen's duty to be involved, that the problem with a lot of things going wrong in this country, and it starts right here, ladies and gentlemen, at city council levels, right here. If every city in California got it right, California would get it right. If you don't get it right, the next town down the road's not gonna get it right. And the people have to demand that things get done right, and the ones that are out there trying to make it happen, already said it. They don't want to be slapped on the back in front of everybody. They don't want to get an award. They don't want to get an award because it just diminishes in a fashion what they were doing because they didn't want to get it for honor and glory to start with. So, think about that. I know you guys are going to do this. Think about that when you think about, well, I want to give this guy the key to the city now.
I have to say something. I find it difficult to believe that anybody would have a problem thanking somebody for a job well done. I can't imagine that anyone could be against that. And I'm hearing people saying things that make me wonder, why would you not want to say thank you? Job well done is a job well done.
Hi, I'm Skip Gorman. I wanted to step up here and see what this microphone really sounds like when you talk right into it. There, calibrate your ears. I wanted to strongly encourage what you're doing, Mr. Mayor. It's a great idea. Needs to be done. God bless you. Make it happen. I'll support you in any way I can. I've learned, sitting in my shop...
I might need some metal keys.
What?
I might need some metal keys.
I was thinking of that. Yes, we can do metal keys.
I would be very proud to have a Ridgecrest resident be the one that's recognized on the key to the city.
Hot dog, piece of cake. I'll make it happen. I've learned to appreciate the people who probably, over time, will be on the receiving end, perhaps, of this amazing people who do what needs to be done quietly, without any fanfare, making it ever so sweet, knowing they'll probably never get any recognition or anything for it. There are people like that, people whose names we don't hear. I get to watch them. I'm blessed with even being aware that they're around. And what you're doing, you probably can't help but do, and good for you. And little bits and pieces of good stuff is rolling out of here. I noticed this evening, an item for the agenda, you kicked off with it, it wasn't an item you'd be voting on, it wasn't an action item, it was just a discussion item. That was a novelty to me. Good. I like that. Keep them coming. My friends, good for you.
Thanks, Skip.
Thanks, Skip. Any other public comment? You know, you will. Just speak right into it, that's all we ask.
My name is Kathy Russell. I just want to say, and today with all the negativity, if you could shed some positive light on what people are doing, it would encourage other people, and it gives you faith in humanity that we can all be here together as one. So, I would only comment on limiting it to one nomination per two year. I think, gosh, I think there's so many people that do good things out there, I would hate to limit that. And I hope that you would open it up to the public and the city of Ridgecrest and everybody that lives here to go, we'd like to do this. Do you have an instance where somebody did something that you, and open it that way, and not limit it to just a nomination by you? And I think the more positive you can put into the community, the better off we'll all be. Thank you.
Not a bad suggestion. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, bring it back to the council. Any other council comments? That was a good suggestion. Again, this is not a formal, this is the establishment of the program, and we can certainly adjust the terms. There is no specific limit that says you can only do the one every two years. I did that as a general standard. Rick is trying to tell me something.
Because the only limit I can see is Ms. Cherie Fries and making sure that it's in the budget.
Right.
So, if you decide to do more than that, you need to make sure that it's in the budget.
Okay, yeah, because we put $700 annually.
Yeah.
I mean, we may have to have a slight adjustment to budget. Or we could, or again, we could simply, you know, again...
We talk about it every year.
We talk about it or change the dollar amount or change some of the general parameters after the first kind of wave, and you guys, we see what happens in the process. The bottom line is it's something positive, and thank you for seeing that. Appreciate it. And Skip, same for you. Appreciate that, sir.
Do you want to think about maybe different levels of an award?
Maybe in the 2.0 version? Because, and the reason why is because then you could have a publicly nominated key to the city versus a council member's nominated key to the city, which would be a way to integrate that aspect, is you could have something where a public citizen can make that nomination and allows that communication to be recognized or rewarded without having to get into changes right now, kind of like the 2.0 version, let's say how the 1.1 goes.
Okay. Roger that.
Okay. I need to give direction. Is it okay for me to give direction to staff to go ahead and proceed? Okay? Thank you. Next item is item number nine. This is a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council. Mr. Reed, get moving. I know it takes you a while. A resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council to authorize the submittal of the Regional Surface Transportation Program, RSTP, and Highway Infrastructure Program, HIP Project Application for fiscal year 2223 and fiscal year 2324. And before he gets a chance to speak, I just want to go ahead and once again commend our communications and our social media, as well as Public Works, on giving us continuous information that's getting out to the public every week on what roads we're working on, what we're dragging off the streets. That's what we want to make sure that the community is hearing and seeing, and thank you for encouraging that through your department.
The credit goes to my staff and to Megan for harping on me to make sure that I give her the stuff.
More power to Megan.
So, yes, as you can see, we want to apply for an RSTP grant and a highway infrastructure project. This is an application for what we feel will finish and complete the ward corridor. It's the second phase of our ward project from Norma to Downs. We're asking for the world. As you can see, this is a competitive grant. We probably won't get this much funding, but in order to be eligible for this, we need a resolution. And we did the best with our engineering estimate to come up with ask-for-the-world, get-what-you-get type deal and try to do everything we could to make that road up to standard, for lack of a better term. It has a fiscal impact to the city of approximately $190,000. That would be our 11.47% match. We're proposing that comes from Measure V, as it is within the Measure V parameters to spend it on. And with that, I'm open for questions. And staff does recommend that you approve it.
Just looking for that staff recommendation.
Are you sure? Well, I want to commend you for shooting for the moon, but let's not shoot for anything less than what's the best that we can shoot for. Let's make the assumption for the sake of conversation, what happens if we don't get it?
If we don't get it, we have a very aggressive paving project coming out in FY22 regardless of what happens with this. We've got more than enough work. I just like to pile it on with my staff. So, we're going to do our best to get something. And if we do not get it, I think we'd probably reapply for it within the next go-around and shoot to get that done, or we can bring it back up to committee, bring it up with city manager and see about maybe altering our course on the FY22 project and maybe completing the corridor. It's just, like I said, it's a big what-if. We can always twist and turn and make something happen if that's the direction of council and direction of manager and staff.
Fantastic. Thank you, sir.
Public, too.
So, can we talk about the fiscal impact?
Mm-hmm.
Can you just discuss it?
So, ultimately, as far as fiscal impact goes, I think realistically, if we did get this grant, the best-case scenario, in my opinion, would be somewhere around $800,000. There's a lot of unknowns with this.
Our costs or their costs?
Their costs. What we would get from them.
Theirs and ours would be like $180,000.
So, right now, that's what this says. So, like I said, we asked for the world. There's a lot of things in here that are unknown, so we have a lot of plug numbers in here, such as replacing, removing and replacing some of the existing storm drains that are out there. Until we actually get inside them, open the road up, know what we're looking at, I don't know what the extent of that will be. We've got some reprofiling of intersections. That's a huge chunk of change to get rid of the dips at the intersection of Norma and the intersection of Sierra View. Like I said, that's something that, we don't know the extent of, so we put a huge plug number in there. So, realistically, like I said, we feel we could, realistically have a shot of somewhere around $800,000, and we would hope that we would be able to design it once we get in and do that, which you guys actually already approved the design for. So, once we start doing our materials testing, our exploratory borings, thickness measurements, things like that, we're hoping that maybe we can refine these numbers and maybe we can get closer to whatever we get for the grant, but...
And do you assume you're going to have enough money in Measure V, given the aggressive paving schedule you have lined up?
Yes, we actually, this is budgeted for.
Awesome.
So...
Thank you.
And if the grant doesn't come through, then we might be revisiting a different budget.
Yeah, or that portion of the budget, yeah, or that portion of the budget may not get used.
Actually, just of clarification, if we budget for this, it'll be either FY23 or FY24, so it will not affect this year's budget. We did budget Measure V funding for the design and engineering.
All right, there you go.
But this would be for your next budget cycle.
Correct.
Thank you.
And we do require a resolution to be eligible to apply for the grant. So, and we just, this is all what's required for the grant application process.
Fantastic.
No further questions from me.
Okay. Any other council questions?
I do have one question. Says this application is for FY2223 and FY2324. So, is this a two-year project or is this spread out?
That's when the funds are programmed for. So, you have, the way Kern Cog does it is you have the ability to construct in 2223 or 2324 based on the availability of funding. And one of the big reasons why we wanted to get the plans done for this is a lot of times you have people that are programmed for the money that don't get their stuff in in time, and they move money around, and you can get an allotment before the deadline. So, we were trying to get it set up to where maybe we could get the whole corridor done in consecutive order.
And the key is shovel-ready.
And the key is shovel-ready. Correct.
That was one of the comments I wanted to make, the fact that we're doing these shovel-ready projects that allow us to be able to apply for those fundings, and the more you can do to accomplish that, I think there's better for Kern Cog to know that we are taking advantage of those opportunities. And Kyle, thank you for representing us to make that happen.
I wish I was a better representative, but, I mean, I'm doing the best. I mean, I'm just, you know, trying to learn and do as much as I can. Thanks for all the help.
And there is one provision here in the resolution that says, any cost increases must be funded by the city of Ridgecrest from other funds. So, when you say other funds, any cost increase would come from Measure V or...
That would be, probably our most desired source.
Probably that situation would not arise.
I mean, like, it always could. The cost for extra funding would be if we had, like, all these adders and things like that, or there's always going to be a risk that you run into things in the ground that are underground that you don't know about. So, there's, I mean, there's potential for other funding always required, but obviously, we try to do our best to research and know what's there before we go into it. So, but I can't sit up here and just blindly say, oh, yeah, there's probably not, because there's always the risk of that anytime you put a bucket in the ground. Thank you, sir.
Any other council comments? Hearing none. Any public comments? Seeing none. I'll go ahead and bring it back to the council. Do I have a motion for approval of the resolution as presented?
Second.
Please vote. Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, next item is item number 10. This is a resolution of the city council of the city of Ridgecrest to levy and collect a flat rate fee on solar permits. This is you also, Mr. Reed?
Sure is.
Last time you were trying to get money, now you're going to, now you're going to start collecting it.
Okay. Yeah, so previously, we had been charging up to a maximum of $500 for solar fees. California Assembly Bill 1414 came out in 2017, was enacted into law in 2018. Somehow or another, we did not receive that message, and a valued member of my staff was doing some research on all the building permits and costs that we've been recently implementing through our budget and making sure that everything is functioning correctly, and she ran across this bill. After speaking with Kern County, we are basically mimicking the state law and what Kern County does, what this does is this caps the permit fee for the basic over-the-counter residential of up to 15 kilowatts. There is an adder, I don't know if I put the adder in here, it's $15 for any additional kilowatt above 15 for a residential, and it also sets a minimum and a flat rate of no less than $1,000 on commercials, and then it goes up by size thereafter. So, we're basically just doing this to stay in tune with the law, to be able to put this into our permit process. And we also have an electrical panel upgrade fee that we would like to enact. It was, it's one of those small bits that we've always used, but I couldn't find anywhere that we actually approved it, and we didn't state it in the budget. So, I wanted to just clarify that and add the $25 flat rate fee that has always been charged for an electrical panel upgrade. And with that, I'm open for any questions.
Yeah, what brought this about? Because I don't, I mean, and I just want to...
I've just waited to hear.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't, I mean, there's a lot of solar going in, and the idea of paying more for fees is just really not something I'm wanting to tee off on. But if you have a reasonable explanation, what is an impact to the city, like a fiscal cost, then that's reasonable, but let's...
It's passed through. It shouldn't be any fiscal impact to the city. What it does is it just restricts the maximum that can be charged. It changed how the permit structure was structured. The majority of these that qualify for the $450 flat rate fee are a single inspection and basically just passed through. Like I said, it's just paperwork that they fill out.
But it's the inspection costs that we are incurring as that we're offsetting.
So, well, yeah, but this is like...
It's like there's an offset cost to it.
So, the offset cost is the inspection cost. So, that's why I said they set a maximum that basically, it's California's way, in my opinion, to encourage solar by saying, hey, you can do a system up to 15 kilowatts on your house that the permit fee cannot be more than $450. So, it's part of the Cal Green, I would say it kind of ties into the Title 24 stuff for Green Act.
I think what we're also trying to accomplish is not subsidizing somebody's solar inspection is what we're doing now. We shouldn't be using general fund to subsidize people's projects.
That makes sense.
And that is true. I didn't say that because our residential right now is only $298. So, that is a true statement. I didn't even think about it that way. So, but it does, we did have a maximum of 500 for this before that did follow the state mandate, but this just lowered the maximum. And now it makes it a flat rate. It's known, it's done. There will be some based off of one inspections, some are based on two, just depends on what's there out in the field. Some will help cover the cost of the counter, some will just be strictly a pass-through fee.
What's the implementation timeline?
Right now. It was enacted into law in 2018, so...
My bill just went up. Seems like it's perfectly reasonable and makes perfect reasonable sense. Any other council comments? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Do I have a motion for approval of the resolution of the city council of the city of Ridgecrest to levy and collect a flat rate fee on solar permits?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Please vote.
At the end there, just as the permits go through.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Next item is item number 11. This is a resolution of the, a resolution agreement between the city of Ridgecrest and the county of Kern for illegal dumping resources funds and establishing an illegal dumping program for the city. Mr. Strand?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. In January of this year, the Kern County Public Works Department brought forth a proposal...
In January of this year, the Kern County Public Works Department brought forth a proposal to the Kern County Board of Supervisors to increase the land use fee to provide additional funding to expand, develop illegal dumping programs throughout the county. As you know, our community, like the rest of the communities in Kern County, struggle to keep litter off of our roads. I know that in the past, we have used, leaned heavily upon like, programs like the Ridge Project to gather volunteers to be able to go out and clean up blighted areas within the community. So, this will help be able to address that. Now, they portioned out this increase based upon the city's maintained road mileage. The county conducted a Proposition 218 hearing, and on May 25th, they improved the actual fee increase. This fee increase will be charged to, a majority of it will be charged to single and multifamily residences where they believe most of the illegal waste comes from. They deem most of it residential, which is true. What I have before you tonight is an agreement between the City of Ridgecrest and the County of Kern to receive these funds and use them for a mitigation purpose. We can use the funds in three areas: education, eradication, and enforcement. Staff discussed the use of these funds and elected to come to council with an illegal dumping program that we wish to establish. That program will consist of two new city street workers and a, an additional code enforcement officer. The new, the street workers will be responsible for picking up the trash, the code enforcement officer will be responsible for the enforcement. As you know, some of these illegal dump sites are on private property, so we have to go through our city municipal code abatement process, through the due process, to be able to eradicate some of this litter off of these properties. So, city will receive annually $203,000. The cost of, initial cost of our program to bring on the employees is $172,000, which is within the budget. Also, as part of the agreement, the county is going to provide gate fee waivers for litter, so when we ask Waste Management to come out and, and give us a big dumpster or two, that we will not receive any, any cost if it's litter, and if it's conducted by the city, so there'll be a cost savings there. So, what I'm asking you for tonight is to authorize myself to sign the agreement with the county to establish the city's illegal dumping program and the authorizing, authorizing the city to hire two additional street maintenance workers and a code enforcement officer in this budget. Authorize the finance director to establish Fund 104, the Illegal Dumping Resources Fund, which will be able to track these funds for reporting purposes to the county on an annual basis, and then authorize the finance director to make the necessary adjustments to the FY '22 budget to establish the illegal dumping program. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, sir. We'll go ahead and start with council comments. You, I always look this way, so I'm gonna let Kyle go first this time, you know?
No, I've been, you've been keeping pace with me and any of my questions on this already. I don't think there's too much to say to the public on, on this particular topic. I think it's great. This was approved by the Board of Supervisors about, was it a month ago?
Would've been back in, uh, May 25th.
May. No, we need to address it, and is this gonna work in conjunction with any of the, the money coming down to Caltrans? I mean, I know it's two different things, I'm just trying to keep everything separate in my head, and I don't, I don't, I'm always great at that.
The, the California Green Project has been assigned to Megan McKenzie to track. In fact, they had a, a call, a conference call on it today, talking about the parameters of the program, so we're establishing what areas we may qualify for the grant and what we may apply for. That is more of one-time funding than it's ongoing funding, but yeah. One of the things we look at is, we're also, you know, in the process of renegotiating our contract with Waste Management, and we are gonna have in there some conditions that Waste Management can provide us, you know, dumpsters free charge to assist with these programs. And obviously, we're still going to work with Ridge Project on the projects that they wish to move forward. We still plan on having, you know, public projects, public events to clean up larger areas, because it's gonna take a little bit for, you know, two people to get caught up with the amount of, you know, trash.
I don't think they'll ever catch up with just two people.
Yeah, no, thanks. I didn't, I didn't mean to derail us at all, I was just trying to think.
They'll be able to put a dent into it, obviously, you know, where the, the two of the employees will be working in, in Public Works, the other will be working out of the police department, but working closely with Public Works, just because we have the, the command structure in the PD for the code enforcement officer. So, this will get us up to two code enforcement.
Thank you.
Mr. Strand, this is for FY 2021 and 2022?
Yes, it's for this year. They, they, yes.
So, when do we expect these funds?
Uh, we'll, we'll get our first installment payment in January of '22, and the second one, I believe, in June of '22. It, it would fall in line with the same funding cycle that we get with our property taxes.
So, do we have to spend this money during this year, or how does this work?
No, yeah, one of the reasons why we were establishing a fund, because any excess funds will be carried over year to year. Those funds can obviously be used for, you know, equipment, dump trailers, any sort of fees that may associate with cleaning up other people's personal property, so we'll have to, we'll have a separate fund that's tracked every year, there'll be a balance.
So, I understand this is a recurring one, so next year, what we get would be dependent on how we spend this money, or?
No, it's an allotment based upon the, the mileage of streets that we, that the city maintains. And so, the, the funding should be fairly consistent. Obviously, you know, $172,000 would be the cost of these three new employees for a full fiscal year. The reality is, we're probably not gonna get anybody hired until November, so we will have a, a fund balance going into the following year, but it'd be similar to that is what we have for Prop 172. The funds are spent on the specific purpose, any funds that aren't spent are, are in that holding account.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I go, can I have a go back?
Absolutely.
You may not have any insight into this, so this is not a put-you-on-the-spot type of moment, but I'm noticing that unincorporated Kern County, has there been any discussion on how those funds will be used? Now, I'm talking about the county, but I mean, we're, you know, we're pretty, we're attached to the hip, so...
Right, I do know from, the, the Public Works Director had a couple of meetings on this, and they, they obviously made some presentations to the Board of Supervisors. They are gonna, they are going to have litter task force teams that they're going to be hiring and creating to be able to address trash throughout the unincorporated area of Kern County, that'd be their responsibility.
Roger, thank you.
But again, it's mileage-based, and there's not as many of those that are actual paved road, right?
Correct. They are getting a fairly significant sum of money.
So, it's almost $4 million if you go into unincorporated Kern County, and that's 3,313 miles. So, I was just looking at the, the amount, and I was like, wait a minute. Hopefully, they've discussed it with you guys or done some kind of coordination, and it sounds like they're doing it.
Yes. Yeah, part of the coordination was, you know, asking the county for those gate waiver fees. So, when we came up, we did a, city employees are cleaning up trash, we weren't gonna have a, a dump fee, which in some cases, if you're talking large, heavy objects that are, that are just, you know, that are discarded within the community, that can add up over time.
So, I didn't want to cut you off, you have anything else? So, one of my questions would be is, I, I get fully the code enforcement officer and the street, but I want to make sure that the focus on this is gonna be arterials, yeah, I mean, or are we focusing on residential? And, and, and what I mean by that is, I mean, I think that there's a, a liability, a responsibility by many of the businesses on the arterials to, to do a far superior job than they're doing right now in some areas. Not, not, not gonna, not trying to shame anybody here, but man alive, there is a ton of trash and some, some very substantial businesses in this area that are doing very well, just regardless of COVID or any other challenges, that with a $200 landscaping job could solve it.
Make one, one thing clear, one of the reasons why we're hiring the code enforcement officer, because there are some properties where the owner should be responsible.
I agree.
And that is, you know, one of the reasons for the code enforcement officer, we are not, I mean, there are, there are areas that these two employees will be working, but there's some areas that we are going to take enforcement action and put the property owner on notice, because we don't have, you know, that sort of level of effort here to be able to clean up some of these properties.
And that's what I was leading to, is, is, is again, you know, we have City Org re-establishing next week, and, and I know that, that this trash mitigation and, and responsibility of the, the commercial property owners is definitely at the heart of one of my topics. That's why I'm raising it. The other one is, is what is our risk? And I'm taking a little bit of that forward-looking risk with salary schedules and things like that, that this could be funded for two or three years and then, then yanked out from underneath by Kern County. Do we have any protections against the county on this, or is this, is this, they feel good about cleaning up trash this year and next year, you know, they might, they might be more concerned with, with hospitals?
Well, this funding is specific for this purpose, so we just, that's one of the reasons why we're establishing the fund, is because I cannot spend this money on putting a place at, in a park. It has to be for this illegal dumping purpose.
Perfect.
And I don't think the county is going to deviate from that. I mean, if you drive through, you know, east side of Bankers Field, there's gonna be a plenty, plenty amount of work that's gonna be needed, and I don't think it's gonna go away anytime soon.
I agree.
So, I have a question on the collection of the illegal dumping debris. Would that be, will we utilize a trailer, or would it be a good idea to have a dumpster that could be designated to collect the, the trash in, and at some point have the county, you know, come by on a call basis to pick up the dumpster, or, you know, to haul it out, or how we, how do we plan on doing that?
Well, we do have a high-sided dump trailer that the Public Works Department currently has. Less is already working on getting another trailer that might be a little more appropriate for staff to be able to, be able to put trash in, in a, in a trailer that's a little bit easier. Larger projects will be ones that will coordinate with Waste Management, where they'll be able to drop the trailer off or the dumpster off, we fill it up, we call, they come pick it up. That's our intent with that, with the new agreement, is to include that in there.
Sounds good.
I've been involved with Ridge Project for many, many years, and one of my concerns is how do we enforce the illegal dumping and the lack of keeping the dumpsters closed and those kind of things? Are we actually gonna go out and, and enforce it and find them? And I see the businesses, especially the, where the trash is blown against fences, and oh, well, it's not my trash, it's not my job to take care of it. How do we enforce that?
Well, as you know, SB 1383 was effective in January of '22. One of the things we're working on with Waste Management is how to implement that mandatory program. So, part of that program is going to have some level of an enforcement arm with that.
Do we go out to the businesses and actually find them? What do we do to make that happen?
Well, we can. If it's problematic, we will have an ordinance that, I do believe our current ordinance says that you have to keep your trash can secure. The issue we've had is just not the, the staffing to be able to enforce that issue. You know, when you have a police department that is addressing larger issues, that's not one of the most important things, I think, that the chief wants to deal with, so this will enable us to have a second code enforcement officer, allow us to expand what we can do. And we know these, this is a quality of life issue, and it's something that's been needed. I, I think our community is, is in much better shape than most communities I go through when it comes to, to trash and cleanliness and lack of graffiti, you know? But it's something you have to keep track of, you have to keep up on it, and this should hopefully allow us to, to help mitigate this issue.
Okay.
And Peggy, that's one of the things in Org is, to give some teeth.
I know, we gotta talk about...
The, the dogs, we need to move from chihuahua to pit bull. Give it some teeth. Any other council comments? Okay. Any public comments?
So, I was gonna ask a question, I think you just said that, we already have one code enforcement officer in the police department, correct? Am I coming through here?
Okay.
So, we have one code enforcement officer currently?
Well, we have a position that is vacant, that we're in the process of refilling us.
Okay, I thought I already specifically said we had one.
Well, we have, we have a position, we lost that position, we're in the process of refilling it, so yes, we do have a funded position, it's just not occupied at this moment.
So, when that's done, and what you're proposing here tonight, we'll have two code enforcement officers, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I have a big problem with that. You know, I, I haven't gone out and done a ride-along with a code enforcement officer, obviously, but a town the size of Ridgecrest really needs two code enforcement officers?
Actually, we probably need three.
You're kidding me.
You asked my professional opinion.
Wow, these guys must spend a whole lot more time driving streets, looking for every little thing they can nail people on than, than even I thought, because I've seen them out on my street, not even looking for them, just happened across, to be out there when they're, I mean, literally, they're driving 15 miles an hour, and they're looking at every house, trying to find every little thing that they can get them on, and I'm sure that they probably do, a lot, but three code enforcement officers, two, that seems like way overkill. Why wouldn't we just hire three street maintenance guys and get them busy? They can go out and find the trash, and you know, you're regular officers, and they got some off-time, they really can go tell a guy, "We're gonna nail you with the citation if you don't clean up this trash." We're out here, you know, trying to pull out, you know, where's the really big concern, you know? So, reading between the lines, it's like, the big concern is trash around Walmart, but that's one property. So, we need three full-time employees from now to the end of time, which is what it's gonna be, to deal with loose trash on the sides of streets around Ridgecrest? Is that really right? I mean, I just can't see it. So, you know, make it two street maintenance guys, or three, three, three street maintenance guys, because when these code enforcement officers run anything else real specific and important to do, that's what they're gonna do, is what I just described earlier, they're just gonna be driving the streets, looking, you know, I've seen them, and I've had, seen them get people hauled down here for something as terrible as having a car parked in their driveway, and there's a bunch of pine hills collected around it, and I'm just going, "Why don't we have anything better to do with our enforcement actions around this town?" And that's what happens when these guys, you know, get out, they got spare time, they go, "Well, I better make sure I'm useful, so I'm gonna go find some more people to nail with, you know, clean up, clean up your driveway, clean up your yard, clean up this, cut your, cut your weeds." That kind of, that's the kind of thing that people really, really, really get aggravated about when they get, you know, sotted or warned or whatever, something that they feel really just their own business, and the city's coming in and impinging on like that. So, I don't, absolutely don't think we need another code enforcement officer.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
This'll only take a short time. I wanted to express my enthusiastic approval and, and that I'm in favor of this. The problem with trash expresses itself in many more tragic ways than simply the blown, the blown trash off of the parking lot at Walmart, for goodness sakes, and...
That's one of many areas. As I, me and Kyle last night, you know, the back of Red Bull or Zimball, if anybody's ever parked in that parking lot in the back there, I mean, because the dumpsters are open, I mean, I mean, it looks like a war zone of trash back there in some areas. There's places all along China Lake Boulevard, in my personal opinion, that could be addressed from a commercial property. Yes, I happen to have one, my concern is the tumbleweeds in front of Walmart because what they do is they act as catchers. They're big magnets. Just bring your tumbleweeds down and manage it a little bit. That's all I'm asking of them. But it's not really that as a target. It's more the whole scope of, I mean, me and Kyle, I can, how many bags did we pull out in, what, 15 minutes of picking up trash as a group?
Several.
I mean, I mean, 20, 25 bags in minutes along Inyo Curtain Road? I mean, so it's not meant to be a single target. It's meant to be a...
I agree. I agree. We're especially vulnerable here in the desert where this a glade and woodland area, the trees and bushes cover up everything out here.
If we didn't have the winds, we would have a few problems.
The desert lies naked, skinny legs in it all are up there to see even from low earth orbit. And New York City, some sharp politician decided that graffiti on the subway cars needed to come off. And they were serious about cleaning up the subway cars and it had many far reaching, good effects beyond simply clean subway cars. People took a little pride in how their neighborhood looks. And it's, it works. And I want to encourage this. And the idea of a team of code enforcement officers appeals to me if they operate with finesse, tact, judgment, maturity, and all that good stuff, which they'll need to because that's a tough position. My friends, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just one clarifying thing. More than 90% of our code cases are voluntary compliance. And so a lot of this time is taken to get people to understand what's going on with the property, why it's a blight issue, you know, why you can't have cars on jacks for 50 years in your driveway. So we do, we have taken a stance that we try to get as much voluntary compliance as we possibly can. And when we are dealing with people's personal property, we do have due process that we have to follow. It's just not going out and writing a citation or coming on somebody's property without the proper authority to do so. So it does take some bodies to make that happen. And I know that the stance that code enforcement has taken since it's been under the police department has been very cooperative with the public. And there are probably some cases that, that the people probably didn't want to clean up their industrial dump zones, which are now have, have all been, got houses sitting there and they're great neighborhoods now. So the Dale Howard matter. So I do believe that this program's worthwhile. You have to have an enforcement arm to it because there's no way that your street maintenance workers can send somebody a letter, go to the planning commission to do an abatement. So you have to have that aspect of it to make this program effective.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
I just have a quick little thought on the, on the subject. So approximately, Mr. Strand, can you tell me the salary of a particular code enforcement officer for a year?
I believe they start out about $18 an hour.
What is that in a year, approximate, just a ballpark estimate? What do you get? Sorry, I can't, I have my head.
It's 40, 40...
Oh, it's $36,000 a year.
Okay. And you're wanting to add two more, plus then they get the benefits, insurance and all that goes with it?
Yes, ma'am. The cost of the three new positions is $172,000 a year. We will be receiving $203,000. So the bodies that we are asking to fund this program with to make it effective, because you, why have a program if it's going to be ineffective, is, is below what our revenue should be.
Okay. Well, I'm sure there's probably plenty that I don't understand about the picture, but my thoughts are just this. Government agencies typically, when they want to get across something to the public, we have seen it everywhere from the top to the bottom of government and their, all their arms and fingers. What do they do? They, they put out public notice campaigns, kind of public relations campaigns. They, they do a push and a push and a push and they talk and they talk and they do it every media avenue they have. And I'm, I'm just wondering, what could actually be done? I mean, I'm not a big code enforcement advocate, but, because I think it gets pretty petty, but what could be done with all those funds to, to address the community and say, hey, look, let's, let's build some community pride. Let's, let's look at our community and what we want. And if we don't, if we, if, if this is not what you want for your community, there's going to be consequences. And you can spell all that out. I mean, it's done everywhere. You know, I don't like the idea of spending money on that, but I see that, yeah, there's, I've seen trash running. It bothers me. It bugs me. And I wish people'd clean up their act. But I'm just saying, why are we going and having more policing of everybody and their private property before we are attempting to say, hey, community, you guys are all about, I mean, here you want to pat people on the back and, you know, we always want to do things to get community involvement in spirit and all that. Maybe some of that money ought to go in that direction rather than the policing direction.
Just as a side note, most of our code complaints are citizen generated. And I'll be frank with you, we haven't been able to keep up with the demand. And these are the folks that, for whatever reason, their neighbors are not kind or care about their constitutional rights or their right to have their freedom and liberty. So, and who do they come to? They come to the people who, that's their job is to enforce, you know, a public standard.
Okay. Any other public comment? There's a caller on the phone, I believe. Okay, caller?
Hello?
Hello, caller, go ahead and state your name.
Yes, this is Renee West of us.
Ah, hello, Renee.
Hi. I live within...
Those are she's watching.
I live within Ridgecrest City Limits. I fully support the city going ahead with this program to help get rid of more trash around the city. The other thing I want to support is the city hiring a regular code enforcement person to help with the ongoing properties that have, that are either abandoned or vacant, because I think they pose risks around the city for people that, that are living in them and their substandard housing etc. That these things need to be brought up to standard. And we need, we need a code enforcement officer. And we also need to get into the program with the county and fully support those things. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have any other callers on the phone? Caller, state your name.
Mike Semat.
Please proceed, sir.
Thank you. Really hate to keep calling in, but this is a topic very near and dear to my heart. I have a pet peeve about garbage and trash and trashy looking properties, which Ridgecrest has a lot of, including wary housing. I won't talk about that tonight, but I will say, if this money was intended for trash collection, desert trash collection, that's great. That's what it should be spent for. If you're, if you're using this money to squeeze in another code officer, I think that's a mistake. That's something that you should be planning for, for your normal expenses. And it's just another example of government creep and government harassment. So I would agree with Mr. Neal, strongly object to the idea this is garbage collection money, taxpayer money, and it's supposed to be for picking up garbage, not harassing residents for changing a tire. And I appreciate Mr. Strand, is what he's doing. I really do. I think he's doing a great job. But I don't like the idea of spending the money and, and inserting a code officer into this fund. So, and by the way, I've been picking up the garbage from Brady Road to the city limits for years, every six months. Takes me about six hours to do both sides of South China Lake Boulevard. That's been, that's been something I've been saying of the city for, well, before Peggy ran for mayor. So it's one of my pet peeves, one of the reasons I think that the city council has an attitude that doesn't listen to the people in this particular situation. Seven years I've been trying to get Peggy to work on garbage in this town. But thank you, Mr. Strand. Have a nice day.
Roger, Roger. Any other public comment? And Mr. Semat, thank you, sir, for, for your comments. And more importantly, thank you for your efforts personally in trying to work on Brady and that. And your community appreciates you for that. Any other public comment? Okay, we'll bring it back to the council. I'm not going to jump off first and just, just a couple of quick comments. I mean, this is, the code enforcement aspect, Jed, this is just for you. I'd rather us be a little overzealous with code enforcement. I learned, I learned some really important lessons in my first two months of office about code enforcement and just exactly, you know, why there's such an importance in, in this community. And there are a lot of things that we have not been able to address as a community. I mean, what I mean by that is city giving notice and looking for voluntary, you know, compliance and looking for these types of changes. I want to be clear, I'm not trying to buy a bazooka because I want to go out and shoot everybody. I'm trying to get the community in a mindset that we each have a responsibility to ensuring the quality of life that we have, that we all want to maintain. That's a simple fact, is, if we don't have a responsibility, then it becomes very easy to say it's not my problem and we turn our head and we walk away. Society has become that in many, many ways. And that's why I strongly agree with you on the second code enforcement officer and, and the third, hopefully that we can find budgetarily over time. How Measure V continues to be, be a great sales tax year, we can talk about a third one next year because those are what's going to make the type of changes in the long run to improve the quality of the community. And, and, you know, I, I absolutely believe that the majority of our community would support this and the majority of our community is very pleased to see us doing something with trash. Not, not actually as concerned about the code enforcement as much as we're getting motion, positive motion without additional expense for the city. So. Any other council comments?
No in-depth comments. Just thanks for your work, Mr. Strand.
Do I have a motion for approval of the resolution, approving agreement between the city of Ridgecrest and the county of Kern for illegal dumping resources funds and establishing illegal dumping program?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion. Second?
Second?
Please vote. Five eyes, motion carries.
Fantastic. So unfortunately for the audience, I am going to have to ask their patience one more time for a few minutes. We are on to item number 12, which is a discussion. The Ridgecrest City Council has considered a request to the Indian Wells Valley Water District to finance its replenishment fee. Our program today has ran now about four hours and 20 minutes. YouTube has some limitations and we need to reset our IT side of the live stream. So if you will grant us a five minute break to be able to get the live stream reset, and then we will begin with discussion item number 12.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Hey, Gary, we're good? Gary, we're good. Thank you very much. Okay, we are on to, we're going to go and return to our regular session. Thank you for your patience and courtesy. Next item on the agenda is item number 12. This is discussion of the Ridgecrest City Council to consider a request to the Indian Wells Valley Water District to finance its replenishment fee. Mr. Lamier?
It's actually going to...
I'll start it off. And it's going to be wrong.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, as you know, the Indian Wells Valley Water District is a water purveyor for the city of Ridgecrest. In other words, they control the quality of water we get as a community. They also control our water future. They also control whether or not our community can grow in the future. And as you know, for several decades, we have been in a critically overdrafted basin. We have spent several years discussing this. A groundwater sustainability plan has been generated and one of the main projects is imported water. I believe that imported water is necessary for the future of our town, the future of our economic growth. I know currently, under the current replenishment fee plan, the water district normally pumps about 6,300 acre feet of water a year. They currently pump about 4,300 replenishment free, which means they pay the replenishment fee on 2,000 acre feet. The water district has been interested in the city's recycled water. That number that we believe can go through the plant is about 2,000 acre feet, which would meet the water district's need if, if we did a project of, you know, direct well injection back into the groundwater table. The problem is, under that scenario, there is no real room for growth. And compounding this is the application for the fully adjudicated basin, the lawsuit that was counterfiled by the water district, which now, you know, is going to bring the entire basin into an adjudication. The city's concern is that the water district is not, at the end of the day, whether it's five years, 10 years, 15 or 20 years, that the water district will not end up with 4,300 acre feet of water that they can pump for free. They're probably going to lose some of that to Searls and some of the farms. So that brings the issue to the point. We're currently looking to purchase Title A water to be able to have water to one day be able to convey that into the valley. We believe by purchasing the water now, it's less expensive for our community in the long run. Because if we buy it now, instead of waiting five, 10, 15 years, it's going to be at a cheaper cost. It's even going to be cheaper than if we continue the model of pay as you go. Right now, the water district's the only entity paying the replenishment fee. Right now, the water district's the only entity paying the replenishment fee. The problem with that is, is that we're collecting it as we go, so we're only looking at small purchases of water. So if there's a larger purchase of water, we're not going to be able to, you know, avail it at this point in time. So, we believe that, you know, moving forward and, you know, bringing this item forward to the water district, at least to the council, to discuss is an important topic for our council to consider. So, I asked Keith to take a look at this, to prepare a staff report. He did so, and with that, I'll turn it over to Keith for some of the things that he had mentioned in the staff report.
You almost gave my report for me, actually. Thanks for that. So the proposition before you is a request to develop a consensus regarding the financing of the cost of replenishment fee by the Indian Wells Valley Water District. So let me start with the first question, which is, why is the city considering this issue at all? What's the city's interest here? And the city council has expressed a strong interest in promoting economic development. The availability of water is obviously vital to the city's mission, and in order to economically grow and develop, the city needs sufficient water supplies not only for its current demands, but also for the needs of the future. The State Department of Water Resources has determined that the basin, the underground aquifer here, which supplies all of the water to the city, is now in a state of, and this is a quote, "critical overdraft." And what that means is that we're drawing substantially more water out of the basin than can be supported by rainfall, which leads to a chronic lowering of the groundwater levels. Recent basin modeling and hydrological reports show that the basin has been overdrafted for nearly six decades already, and these reports show that only about 7,650 acre feet of water per year can be pumped from the basin without endangering water supplies. And I throw that acre foot number around, you hear some people talk about that. An acre foot is the amount of water that it would take to cover one acre of land with a foot of water, so you can picture that. For some reason in the water world, we talk about acre feet. So it's 7,650 acre feet can be pumped safely, but it's been estimated that the combined pumping in the basin could be as much as 28,000 acre feet, so, you know, four times as much, which equates to about 9.128 billion gallons of water, by the way. So if this pumping is to continue unabated, the basin's infrastructure will be unable to meet the basin's water demands in roughly 43 years. So, we seem to have about 43 years if we keep on doing what we're doing. So it's not surprising that the state, the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority, the County of Kern, and the water district have all agreed that we currently face a water crisis. In response to this problem, the water district recently filed a legal complaint called a groundwater adjudication that described this crisis. And just for clarity, a groundwater adjudication is a special kind of lawsuit where everybody who has a pumping, wants to claim an interest or a right to pump in a groundwater basin has to demonstrate their right to pump in court. Page nine, paragraph 18 of the complaint filed by the water district states, quote, "The district is informed and believes overdraft conditions have existed in the basin for decades as a result of groundwater pumping," close quote. Paragraph 19 of that document states that the basin is, quote, "critically overdrafted," close quote. And even Orange County Superior Court Judge Kirk Nakamura, who by the way is the judge who's now presiding over this groundwater adjudication lawsuit, has already ruled in a different case that there is no, quote, "There is no dispute. The basin has been in a state of critical overdraft for decades due to overpumping." So that's the problem. But what's the solution to the problem? So one possible solution would be to reduce all pumping and eliminate any future pumping. And in fact, that solution is one that the water district is currently pursuing right now through their recently filed groundwater adjudication. In that lawsuit, they described the need for imported water. Page 11, paragraph 26 states, quote, "There is presently no viable means to cure the basin's overdraft through artificial recharge or other supply augmentation strategy under current basin conditions and cumulative average annual extraction/pumping quantities." Because we have no current ability to augment water supplies, the water district has asked the court to issue an order for, quote, "A moratorium on new or increased appropriations from the basin," and then secondly, "A limitation on or a reduction in the extraction of water from the basin." In other words, the water district is saying that since we have no imported water, we have to stop all new pumping. They are also asking the court to order that there be no pumping beyond the 7,650 acre foot safe yield. This request in the complaint is alleged as a preliminary injunction, meaning that they can file this at the start of litigation, and it would be in effect from the start of litigation through the end of it. And if the judge then ultimately agrees it's necessary, it would be in effect forever. And that motion could be filed tomorrow. If the district's request is successful, then there's no new water production, and as a consequence, no new growth until we can obtain imported water supplies. Now, the groundwater authority has come up with a different solution, which is bringing water into our valley from other parts of the state. But that solution is expensive. We need to begin bringing the water in as soon as possible to avoid harming our economy, but it's incredibly expensive for the citizens to pay for all of these costs at once. For that reason, the GA has adopted or instructed staff, or instructed the chairman, to send a letter to the water district to consider financing these costs so they can spread out over time. This has several advantages. The most obvious advantage is that it would reduce water bills by roughly 75%. The second advantage is that people actually benefiting from the new water will be ratepayers of the future, so it's only fair that these repair, that those, that that water be paid, I'm sorry, that the rate, those ratepayers pay for some of the costs. And then finally, the other advantage is that it will supply all of the money we need now so that we can acquire water, all of the water we need immediately, which will not only address this issue of the injunction, but also improve our chances of getting the water cheaply. So what staff is recommending tonight is that the city council discuss this matter and develop a consensus among you. If the consensus opinion supports the report of staff, then we recommend that the city council appoint a representative to speak on behalf of the city at the next water district meeting where they will be considering this matter. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Keith. We'll go ahead and begin with some council comments, and then obviously, we know we have some public comments. Let me just go ahead and first thank Ron and Keith for their presentation and for all the detail that's been provided. This is a very tricky issue. I understand the, there's a lot of law going on here, there's a lot of debate, but I think I want to make sure I kind of reiterate a couple of things that you said, Keith, which is that the lawsuit affirms that overdraft exists.
The lawsuit, by the lawsuit you're referring to, the groundwater adjudication filed by the district?
Correct.
Yes, it's premised on the idea that there is chronic overdraft that can't be cured currently by bringing in imported water.
And that it also states or predicates that there's no visible means to resolve it through recharge?
There's no current means.
Current means.
Yeah, that's correct.
And then the importance of this, the potential injunction aspect, is that it could limit or dramatically limit the availability of water, potentially, if the numbers appear as they are, that we have a 7,600, I apologize.
7,640.
You know it by heart, I know it's got a seven at the start of it, compared to the 28,000 that we believe we're currently using, which would be a 75% reduction in water usage across the entire community for every party tied into the adjudication.
Presumably, that would be exactly the purpose of the injunction, yes.
Or also known as Armageddon.
No, that's not a legal question.
I, yeah, I was just making my comment. I just, I write down very specific words, but that's, I got my point across. Mr. Hamon.
So I have a couple of quick questions, and I'll probably have plenty more. And Attorney Lemieux, in regards to the moratorium limitations, what effect would that bear on the city and growth?
Well, one effect on the city itself as an entity is it presumably could affect our, so the city currently pumps a couple hundred acre feet a year for purposes of the parks, so that we can have grass in the sports fields, so, you know, one immediate consequence presumably would be it would affect our ability to irrigate the grass. As far as the city as a polity generally, the effect would be if it's, if they're saying no additional new water can be produced, then that would presumably mean that there would be no water necessary for growth, and so that people who are attempting to develop land or put in new commercial sites would not have the water, not have the ability to demonstrate that they have the water necessary for that.
And then my second question is, I assume that it's safe to say that this legal issue, this lawsuit, could be an ongoing issue for quite some time, so that these...
That's actually, believe it or not, that's actually an understatement. So I was personally involved, I think I mentioned it before, in the Antelope Valley groundwater adjudication. That case was originally filed in the early 2000s. I am very happy to report that we finally got it finished through the Court of Appeals in July of this year. So I don't know what the quick math is on that, but I suppose it's about 21 years. So I don't know how long this one will last, but I am briefing my son on it, just in case I need to hand it off.
So I see this as something that could be quite lengthy in its term, and also something that would lend to be quite expensive, too, for the parties involved paying for it, and...
Okay, so, thank you. Can I just jump in there real quick? That would limit both commercial and residential development, correct? The moratorium?
There would be no additional water.
Right. I just wanted to make sure. You said commercial, I want to make sure that we clarify, both commercial and residential. You would see homes not being built?
Presumably, yes.
Thank you.
I have a number of questions and comments. If indeed the safe yield is 7,650 acre feet, we are pumping now 28,000 acre feet, that means everybody would have to cut their production of water by approximately 75%, not just the people inside the city of Ridgecrest, but everybody. So that would be the base, that would be the commercial users, the public users, everybody would have to cut down to 7,650 acre feet. And this case was filed by the water district in July of this year. Am I correct?
You're correct. It was filed at the beginning of July this year.
So for...
Maybe the end of June.
All of us to cut down to 7,650 acre feet immediately, how is that accomplished?
Well, that's an excellent question. I don't know that it would result in everybody cutting down evenly. It's a complicated question, that there's an issue of would the base be required to cut down at all? It's quite possible that their pumping is not reduced, but everybody else's is, which would actually cause everybody else to be reduced more. I just know that, you know, nobody can do anything with only 25% of their water. You know, you can't have a farm with that, you can't have a mine with that. So I don't really know what the judge would do if faced with this question.
How do we come to the reconciliation that we ask the water district to work with all of us to import water? How is that done? Can we, can there be a discussion? Can the Department of Water Resources work with us to try to find this imported water so we all can continue to use the water we need? Because if we're going to pump, go from 28,000 to 7,650 acre feet, how is that accomplished? By imported water?
Well, I should probably mention something that I didn't mention, which is, the water district is paying their portion of the replenishment fee, and the groundwater authority is using that money in order to obtain these water resources. As a matter of fact, last month, they sent out a term sheet, which is essentially an offer, to purchase some water, some table A entitlement, and there's other promising leads that we're pursuing right now. So that work is going. We're not slowing down, we're moving quickly. We would obviously prefer it if all of the water users were paying the replenishment fees, so, you know, it's, I don't want to give the impression that the water district is not cooperating with that aspect of it. They have obviously adopted it, they're paying it, and they passed it on to the ratepayers. And the question really is, is there a way of making this less painful to the ratepayers?
And we can't do anything until we come to the point that we can finance it for more than five years. Can we finance it so it isn't going to cost all of the ratepayers and all of the users of water such a tremendous amount that they cannot afford to continue and to exist?
At the groundwater authority level, the staff report was presented that actually listed off a bunch of specific scenarios on how it could be funded with, I believe, right? That was, yeah. That included tax-free municipal bonds over 25 years, over 30 years, over 35 years, and laid out the various costs and what the, you know, decrease in the rate would be. And that information has been already presented to the water district.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I have a few comments and questions, and it may be questions later, because I'm sure we have some public comment. So, sorry, I need to gather my thoughts, I've been sitting here and storming on it for a while. Well, I'll just say something that's uncomfortable, and I'm sure you're, as a lawyer, you used to be in uncomfortable situations, so I'm sure you're not...
Okay.
That is that it appears, so this, let's just get back to the request. The request is, we are making, we're asking the water district to go out on a limb, to do something that likely to them, and not the water district, but likely to them seems risky. So I guess what we have to discuss up here is, do we think that's a reasonable request? Do we think it's reasonable to go to another entity, such as the water district, and say, "Come on, guys, what do you think?" And do we, do we think that, I mean, is it reasonable? Let's just leave it at that. I have a bunch of other questions and comments, but, and I'll point that at you, Mr. Strand, just for a moment.
Yes, I think it's reasonable. You know, most cities run their own water districts, their own water companies to provide water to their citizens. In this case, the water district controls our growth. We've known for some time that we're in a critically overdrafted basin. We know that we're going to need imported water at some time or another to ensure our water future, our ability to grow, the ability for the base to grow. We also believe in the law of supply and demand, that water, especially table A water, is now a commodity, and we can only presume that that commodity is going to get more expensive over time. So purchasing it now allows us to have water in hand, or the water district to have water in hand for our growth. I mean, I think the water district has done a great job of providing good quality water for us. I mean, their system did really well during the earthquake, but I guess the question is, is it, is the city of Ridgecrest's water future secure at this moment? And I think the answer, I think, has to be no.
Well, it certainly doesn't feel secure after that briefing. So, okay, the rest of my comments are, the part where it starts to get uncomfortable... The rest of my comments are, the part where it starts to get uncomfortable, is that despite the, the politics and the data that gets disputed, it would appear that we are going to the Water District to ask them for something, but the, and again, I don't want anybody who works for the Water District to take this personal. If you're, you know, if you're elected, if you're watching this and you're an elected member, well, sometimes we take stuff personal, but we know it's got to, it's got to run off our back eventually. So, I just want to preface with that. I think the people that work for the Water District do a great job. They deliver a great product. They work hard, so these comments aren't correctly at them. But it would appear, from one elected representative to another, that we're getting a conflicting message. And this comes from public perception. So, here we are, asking them to, to finance a fee that we're not sure they're going to want to take on. Maybe they will, maybe they won't. I don't know how that's going to go. I mean, it, it was public knowledge that several board members went against the fee in, originally. And am I right in saying they're paying it in protest?
That's correct.
Because that's, that's the public perception. Okay. So, I think that that's maybe, that would be a good reason for us, somebody, one of us, to go to the Water Board meeting and maybe have that conversation, right? And see, to see what the answer is. And I think it's fair enough to have a conversation, to say, "We're making a request of you, because this is what we believe the facts are. This is how we see things moving forward. And we're afraid," I can't speak for the rest of you, but from what I'm hearing from me saying, Keith Lemieux, I'm not ignorant to the water. I've, I've been educating myself as much as possible. Some of you in this room have helped me educate myself. But we're afraid that the view, or I'm afraid, the view of the Water District and the future of the valley, and the view of the city and the future of the valley are starting to diverge. And I think that's a dangerous thing in a small community like this. So, it seems to me like it's somewhere we need, we need to come to, to an agreement, or at least recognize that we're at an impasse. Does that, does that make sense, what I'm trying to say? It was not so much a question at you, but am I correct in summarizing?
I think so. I, I mean, you're, you're, this is an opinion, so I...
It is an opinion. I know I'm rambling a bit, but I'm trying to get a bunch of thoughts all together.
I think my answer to your original question is, is, is this the right thing to do? Is, is this the right way to do this, I think, is what you're asking? And, and my answer to that, if that's the question, is, assuming that there's a consensus on, among the city council that, that supports the replenishment fee and, and the need to bring imported water in, and supports the idea that the water rate should be reduced, then we, we don't obviously have any direct, as, as, as the city manager said, we have no direct control of that whatsoever. The only ability we have to affect that outcome is expressing our opinion...
Right.
...at this point. And so, it's, it seems to me that, yes, that would be an appropriate thing to do, express that opinion.
Okay, I think I have a lot more questions and comments later, but I want to, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm waiting for you.
And I'm going to, we're going to open the public afterwards, too, so.
No, I just want to, you know, I just want to make sure, because we, in a, in a way, in a smaller way, we're, we're almost stepping out of our lane a little bit. That's, that's the perception, and I, and I want the, the public to understand that, yeah, it, it appears that way, but it's out of concern. It's, it's out of a genuine worry, and it's out of a, maybe a need to be diplomatic, where diplomacy may have failed. Now, if I'm saying that, and it's making people uncomfortable, and they don't appreciate it, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. But it seems to be the case. I pay attention to the newspapers, and I pay attention to social media. I see the way things are being portrayed. And I can tell you that, right now, as it stands, you know, a, whether it's a minority or a majority, if there's any public opinion out there that's laying the blame solely for where we're at, and where things are going, at anybody's feet, which, you know, I hear it a lot, Scott, so this is the rest of this uncomfortable conversation, I hear a lot of people lay it at your feet, and I think that's completely unfair. Completely unfair, when you have multiple entities that have all taken part in this GSP. Whether it was uncomfortable, and whether it was disputed, we're still here where we are. And so, if we can maybe re-engage in some diplomacy, I think that this, this could be a good thing. It could be. But it's going to be uncomfortable, and I'm sure, with the documents I've seen flying around, there's going to be some offended people. But maybe we can, maybe we can work past that.
I agree with what Councilman Blake said. It really saddens me that two entities are pointing fingers at each other and stuff, amicably resolving this issue. The purpose of formation of groundwater authority is to come to a solution amicably. So, I think that's the direction we need to go. I mean, the cuts of the matter is whether Water District would finance a replenishment fee. But we don't know how their financials are, whether they have the capacity to finance those things. What is the effect of, at Quakes on their financials right now? I don't know. So, is that something possible for them to do? Are we asking something unreasonable for them to do? So, I don't know. These are all the questions unanswered at this time.
Okay. We'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. I'm actually going to do the phones first, because there've been, I, I know one, somebody already had called in, and see if we can clear those quickly. First, do I have any callers on the phone? Caller, state your name.
Mike Sanott.
Please proceed, sir.
The hot topics are all tonight. Um, I'm going to, I'm going to have to request extra time, but I'll, I'll take it at another meeting. There's one problem in this town. It's the Navy. There's one reason that this water basin has been drained. It's the Navy. It's the Navy that came to Nick Gleason, former CEO of China Lake, and quietly agreed to accept the Navy's assertion of Federal Reserve water rights. The Navy doesn't have any water rights. That land is on BLM land, status withdrawn. That means 25 years go by, they have to renew their lease on public lands. There's plenty of water on 1.1 million acres. China Lake does not need to reserve 7,000 acre feet of the allocation for this basin. China Lake is responsible for wasting water for decades. So, the one solution is to get China Lake to withdraw its assertion of Federal Reserve water rights. There's no such thing. It's not a law, it's a protocol. It's a strategy by the Navy with the complicity of Nick Gleason and Kevin McCarthy to try to establish a firm ground to have the next renewal on that 25-year lease renewed in perpetuity. Now, I don't know about you, but I, I don't, I don't like the idea of giving the Navy that land in perpetuity. Not one bit. And if you accept this assertion by the Navy, which you're the, you're the responsible parties here, you're the city council of Ridgecrest, and you've, you've been complicit with this plan, this is a protocol, a strategy by the Navy to get that land in perpetuity. They should pay for, for their water, what they use. They don't get to reserve for their employees who live in the off-base and who are all Water District customers or well-water, well-owners. So, the, the whole problem here is because of the Navy. And it's really not the Navy, it's the military industrial complex. It's Raytheon, McDonnell Douglas, and so forth. There's only 200, 250 uniformed military on that base. It's the Department of Defense, it's the federal government saying, "Screw you, we're going to keep our 7,000 acre feet. You can pay to replenish the basin." I think I've said enough. If you have any questions, I've researched this thing so deep, I can explain Federal Reserve water rights. I can, it's a, it's a protocol, it has nothing to do with a military reservation. So, if the Navy wants to continue to make this assertion, then they can do so. But that's what's the problem here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think I have one more caller, is that correct? Caller, state your name.
Yes, this is Renee Westola. I live within Ridgecrest city limits. Um, I support the city council, um, trying to negotiate or go into an agreement with the Water District to try to get a, an extension of time where they would, uh, do the municipal bond, whatever, uh, economic mechanism to afford the, uh, money to purchase imported water. Um, I do have a question for Mr. Lemieux, because I haven't been able to get any answers in any Water District meetings. Um, I don't really understand why the district went in, did this adjudication, and is there any chance they can withdraw and get out of it? And then another question I have is, supposedly there was a letter sent from DWR to all the stakeholders, trying to bring them to a negotiating table. I don't know if anything's happened with that. Those are my comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Do you want to address that now, Keith, or do you want to?
I can address it now.
Okay.
The question was, is there any ability for the Water District to withdraw the adjudication? The Water District could do that, could, could dismiss it. The problem is, now Searls has filed a duplicate version, so the, both the Water District and Searls would have to get rid of it. So, interestingly though, I think the Searls version does not ask for the same kind of injunction. So, that injunction thing is currently just a product of the Water District right now.
Thank you, sir. Okay, public comment from the floor.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and staff, and in particular, members of the public that are out there, and the ones that are here at 10 o'clock, I appreciate you staying here. I think you all know me, but for the record, my name is Don Zadiv, and I'm the general manager of the Indian Wells Valley Water District. I'm here to make a statement on behalf of the board of directors of the Water District in response to the city council's staff report regarding the request for the district to finance the replenishment fee. I recall that when this topic was first discussed at the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority meeting, at the August board meeting, Director Vallejo from Indian County and Director Itnire from San Bernardino County both expressed concern about one public agency meddling into the financial affairs of another independent public agency. The Water District Board is in agreement with the concerns expressed by those two groundwater authority directors. As your staff report correctly notes, the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority did send a letter to the district requesting that the issue of the district financing the replenishment fee be placed on the Water District's September board agenda. At that same meeting, Director Ratura was clear that the issue would, in fact, be on the Water District's agenda, and it will. The city staff report states, quote, "The city council may wish to consider sending a similar message for presentation," unquote, at the Water District's September board meeting. The Water District Board notes that this is not a quote-unquote "similar message," it is more. It is a direct attack on the Water District, going to so far as to blame the basin's state of critical overdraft solely on the Water District. This report is filled with misrepresentations, half-truths, and so much more. The most troubling aspect of the staff report is that's an obvious attempt to sway the public, and is noted as anything but accurate. For example, the staff report states the sustainable use of 7,650 acre feet per year, and the current pumping is approximately 28,000 acre feet per year, leading to current overdraft. The report identifies Meadowbrook Dairy and Mojave Pistachios as two of the largest pumpers, but fails to mention that according to the data compiled by the Indian Wells Valley Cooperative Groundwater Management Group, historically up to 65 percent of the basin pumping is done by agricultural interests, or that those agricultural interests received approval to farm not from the Water District, but from Kern County. It's interesting that the county of Kern is not mentioned one time when cast in blank for the overdraft. The report discusses a recently filed adjudication and anticipated legal fees, but fails to ignore the two current lawsuits filed against the groundwater authority challenging the groundwater sustainability plan and replenishment fee. Why weren't those included, or the associated legal fees in defending those lawsuits included? There are no examples, but I'll end with the supposed issue and. The city report estimates a 75 percent reduction in replenishment fee, quote, "using recent financial projections provided by financial analysts," unquote. To be clear, those financial analysts are not district analysts, and the estimated interest rate of 2.628 is way too low. The district issued a certificate of participation in 2018, and the actual interest rate is nearly double what that is estimated. One of their assumptions were used to reach the estimated 75 percent reduction. The district will present an accurate and complete description of the potential impacts on the district and its customers if it were to finance replenishment fee at the September 13th board meeting. In closing, I think we can all agree that there are serious issues facing Indian Wells Valley, most notably with respect to the water resources. The Water District Board believes the focus needs to be on finding solutions to these issues we are facing. We agree with the recent letter sent by the Department of Water Resources on July 16th, offering to facilitate the development of collaborative solutions among interested parties in Indian Wells Valley. The Water District sent a loving response, and has agreed to participate in any Department of Water Resources facilitated process. We encourage the city, who chairs the groundwater authority, to reach out to Department of Water Resources, accept the invitation, and let the collaborative process begin. I will not take or respond to any questions tonight, and the district hopes that we will not be compelled to make further comments prior to the September 13th board meeting, but will if it arises. Thank you for the opportunity, the city council, and to the public at large.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
Mr. Manager, Councilman Mayor, I just have a couple of questions. I have not been following the water issue closely. But it is my understanding that pretty much the entire west coast, I want to say that, west of the Rockies, is in a state of drought. And we're talking about purchasing water for years, forever. Where is this water going to come from? Anybody have an answer to that?
I, I can answer that. There, there are a number of possibilities, but the, the most likely one is the state water project.
So...
And it's a permanent, a permanent right.
So, that would mean, I mean, location-wise, actually, that's coming from the Delta? Or...
Uh, past that, yeah.
Okay. So, if the state of California stays in a drought, what impact is that going to have on that permanent resource?
Well, the, the idea is, and, and this would put you in the same position as most places in Southern California, by the way. The, the idea is that, obviously, I don't think, the full amount of water has never been available through the, the state water project, I don't believe. And I think next year, for example, the allocation is projected to be zero, there'll be no water going through. So, what does that mean? How, how's that help us, is the question? And the answer to that is, when we have wet years, we will buy additional water, and we'll stick it in the ground, and we'll bank it. And when we have dry periods, we'll draw on that.
Okay. Interesting you say that. I sat in a, it seems a board of supervisors meeting years ago in Bakersfield. Nick Gleason, actually, I think, was our county supervisor then. And it was pertaining to a solar project over in... a solar project over in Fremont Valley, which we commonly refer to as Garlock. And in that meeting, it was disclosed that, uh, the owners of most of that property, part of the project was to bank water and to be able to, um, like you just discussed, use it as a reservoir to, to tap into in the future. And that ability was given to Edwards, California City, China Lake, and, and nobody was interested in it then. I just think it's kind of ironic that here we are, seven, eight years later, and now that's being discussed because they had an opportunity to secure water rights through this project over there in Fremont Valley. I'm not sure why it never went anywhere. Um, just out of observation, in terms of wet years and dry years, it's my understanding most of the reservoirs in our state were developed for a five-year storage capacity. Was it two years ago, everybody was concerned that Oroville Dam was going to burst, had spillway issues, that thing was basically bursting at the seams? Two years, that reservoir's dry. Where'd all that water go? Most of our reservoirs in the state are in the same situation. Nasa Nieto, bunch of reservoirs on the central coast, same thing. They were historic record lows, and in one year, they were a max capacity plus. And in two years, that water's gone.
So, uh, we have a number of water reservoirs in Southern California and places that water is stored through active water storage programs, through the Metropolitan Water District and also other local water districts.
Mm-hmm.
And I was pleased to hear the other day that, um, that in Southern California, there's sufficient water in storage currently, I think, to last us for two years with no water coming from the north.
Okay.
Because of prudent management from the water managers down south. Interestingly and kind of ironically, they don't have that water storage in Northern California. They, they are dependent on the water that kind of passes through, and so they're going to be presumi- if, if the drought continues, they're going to be facing a water crisis that is maybe more significant than what we have down south. Not this area, obviously, because we don't have any imported water and we're not banking currently. But if we can get into that kind of program, that's the kind of, uh, that's the kind of guarantee we can get going forward to keep our water supply strong.
Correct me if I'm wrong, you, you earlier stated that the water we would purchase would come from up in the area, that you just said they'd rely on pass-through.
The water would come from there in wet years and we would put it in the ground here and then, just like they do in other places in Southern California, and then we would have it when we needed it.
Okay. That reminds me, my last question. How is that transported? We're talking about 21,000 acre-feet of water. That's not going to be on a truck.
No. It's not going to be on a truck.
Not even on a thousand trucks.
Yeah, that, and that is, that is a question that we're still examining. Uh, the conveyance system will be expensive, probably, although there's a solution that maybe is less expensive. Um, and we will certainly be looking to, uh, the federal government and the Navy to be paying for a chunk of that because frankly, the local community can't afford to do it, and we've made that clear. You know, this is, the, the Navy chose to set the base here, is what we've told them, and, you know, everybody came here to work and, you know, they, they need to help fix the problem. So, uh, from the perspective of the GA, buying this water is our skin in the game. But, uh, going forward, we're going to need a lot of state and federal assistance to get this program working. And we're right now pursuing that. Uh, I'm, I'm told that we've got support from, uh, from federal elected representatives, for example, and, um, so we're working on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any additional public comment?
This is Mike Neal. Now, as usual, this item was preceded by a staff report, uh, which was extremely truncated by Mr. Lemieux. Uh, but at first I have a question. Uh, who, who were the guys that generated this staff report? Who's, was it just you, Mr. Lemieux, or there are other persons involved?
I wrote the staff report.
Okay. So you get to own it?
Correct, proudly.
And, next thing I'd just like to bring up, and I asked the entire council, would you please have the entire report read, which is like five pages worth? I didn't get one single response, so thank you for not responding. Uh, that does encourage people, but I'm used to it personally. So, that's, this five-page staff report, which, I guess the next question is, how many, how many of you read it, the whole thing?
I read it the whole thing.
Three times.
Okay. Good. So you're familiar with the statements in the staff report. Let me just point out a few of these statements, which I'll, I'll just honestly say, this was very soft-pedaled by Mr. Lemieux when he read spa portions and, and, oh, by the way, apparently you don't mind violating the Brown Act when it's in your advantage because that whole discussion about the adjudication lawsuit had nothing to do with this agenda item. You allowed it to go on forever, totally off-topic. So, but that's the way we work around here, isn't it? Let's look at the, and I'm just gonna, I've got a bunch of potential comments about this, but I'm just gonna highlight just a very few for sake of brevity. And, uh, so in the summary that you say you read, under the, says, "The purpose of the replenishment fee," says, "The water district has, was historically charged with not only operating the water system, but also with preserving and maintaining the groundwater supply." Really? I never heard that the whole time I've been here. I believe it was their job to supply water to its customers. Never heard one single thing about them having the responsibility for maintaining, they can't even maintain the groundwater supply. They only, they only have a district that covers part of the basin. That, that's a, really just a ridiculous statement. I can't believe they even put it in there. Okay, goes on to page three. Here we go with what I think you've probably, at least Mr. Lemieux on his own, has enraged the water district board members with this kind of stuff. Says, "In an apparent effort to assign blame for its costs, the water district added the fee as a line item to their water bill. Water district customers that have called the water district to complain about the amount of the bill have been directed to the IWVGA." Well, they loved it. "This appears to be part of a strategy to apply pressure to the IWVGA by stoking anger among the ratepayers who are subject to the unnecessarily high rates." Well, I read this to the water management committee and I had comments, brief comments to make. That, my brief comment on that one, it's just lies and obfuscation. That's all that is. Then it goes down a few paragraphs later, says, "It would appear therefore that the water district's failure to consider this issue is not merely an oversight, but part of an intentional strategy." My comment was, more lies than obfuscation. Couple paragraphs later, says, "The city will need to vigorously defend its water rights from this unwarded and legally deficient attack." So slander the water district. They've got a legally deficient attack with their adjudication lawsuit, and they're being big, bad bullies. Go on further, to like the next page, close the bar, I'm under the, what's titled, "Rate Reform by the District." And I'd say, you know, I'm just going to skip that because I'm running out of time. I'm going to read you the last real highlight of this. "In some, if we had the money available now, we can ensure the stability of the community and potential for economic growth." There's always the pleasure there. "So the staff recommends the city appoint a member or members to present a prepared statement expressing the concerns contained in this report at the next regular meeting of the water district." And it said, well, as has been stated, well, if we had this money, we could go get all this water. Well, the original plan was to get $50 million and go get water. And now they're saying, oh, we can get all this water if we get 25 million. Really? My question is, when are they going to make Searls pay up? When are they going to make C. Searls and say, go finance this money? Okay? This is, my last request is, please do, please do go to the water district and present something like, what's in all this? Lies and obfuscation. And I'll give you a, a little prediction. They're going to give you this.
Thank you, sir.
Can I comment on the questions at the end?
Yeah, let's just wait for the end.
Okay.
Ron Kocinski, I think you all know me. I'm speaking on my behalf, not the water district's, make that clear. Uh, I really appreciate the, the letter or the information sent, or I should say, the statement read by Don Zadiva by the board. I also, I'm sure you all are aware of what was in the Daily Independent written by the management and supervisors of the water district. So these, that docu- what he read and this pretty much says what I was going to say. So by, by way of going to last, pretty much everything I said, here, here's some terms I wrote down after I, I read this, with this report by Keith. Misstatements, falsehoods, accusations, words like ambivalent, adversarial, intentional strategy, all an attempt to disparage the water district. It's the wrong way to go, guys. You realize that 95% at least of the water district's customers are your citizens that are represented by you? What is this whole thing about adversarial? I'm sick and tired of hearing it. Why can't, why, why can't we get on the same page? You know, I can, I, I'm not going to talk about the plan, I'm not going to talk about what could be done and not done, that's, you, you guys have heard me before, it's pretty much on the track that it was. There's no sense in going there. But, but this adversarial that's been set up, and it started back probably about two years ago, it really hit a head when, when the city decided to drop negotiations for the wastewater recovery directly with the water district, could put it through the GA, and also negotiate getting paid for their legal services. That's when things just, it, it just went south. So in my opinion, that the adversarial relationship was began to set up by the county. My belief is what the county is trying to do is direct away from the fact that they're the ones, not the water district, that had control of what could happen in this valley. They're the ones that allowed in commercial farming. They went against their land use plan. They didn't look at it thoroughly. So everything's trying to deflect away from the wa- away from them to the water district. That's just my belief. I think that, but, but I want to see some cooperation. Why can't you? You guys represent the same people. What's going on here? And I know it's in your best interest to say, hey, we're tired of hearing all the complaints about the replenishment fee, but then you also have to let the water district decide what's best for them financially. Kyle, you said it. You know, I, I don't know where they're, where they are now. I've been away for almost a year, so I don't know their status. I do know they have a good credit rating, and I'd certainly like any organization in this city to have a good credit rating that serves the public. So keep in mind, talk. You know, do, what's, what are they going to do? Are they going to go ahead and finance, you know, 25 to 40, maybe, they have to go for maybe 35 or 40 million with interest and hand a chunk of change over to the, uh, the GA? I have a suggestion. Why doesn't the city finance it? Why doesn't Kern County finance it? I mean, that's a, that's a possibility, you can finance it too, because you have a guaranteed fee coming at least from the water district. Uh, so that's just a, a thought. But I'm just saying that there needs to be some cooperation. You know, the people in this community that you represent are also ratepayers for the water district. And if, and if those two entities can't sit down at a table and come to an agreement, we got a real problem. And, and, and you need to get into an open mind, you need to look at everything that's going on. Yeah, all this talk about where the water's coming from and, and we're in a drought and we're going to spend 20 million dollars for this and that, I mean, that's, that's irrelevant right now compared to just getting along with the two entities in the city that could make things happen. After all, the water district is basically, is water. They probably understand it better than just about anybody. And, and, and you've had the cooperative together for well over 30 years before it was broke, maybe 25 or 30 years before it was broken up. And don't forget, that cooperative, Kern County sat on that. The East Kern Conservation sat on it, La Hotten sat on it, the city sat on it, Searls Valley sat on it for 25 years. So that whole group knew what was going on with this aquifer and was, was looking at concerns, but they had no authority whatsoever. So keep that in mind. Uh, people besides the water district knew what was going on in this valley. The major farms sat on it as well. So that's all I have, just, guys, you know, I think, someone famous, he said, can we all just get along? I'm just tired of seeing this. I mean, this stuff, this disparaging remarks and, and the stuff that you read in here, it, it, there's no need for that. There's absolutely no need for it. All it does is bring up the wall tighter and you're going to take, you're going to have one board standing against another, and they're going to stand put without talking. So please get together. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
But this is a major concern and the reason I came. I've lived in the valley for 38 years, I worked for the Navy for 25 of that years. I understand the Navy's part of probably using a majority of the water, like they said, agricultural tool, but we're growing, the city's growing, we have all kinds of construction people on base, we all need water. So like Mr. Kocinski said, and Don Zadiva, and, and Mr. Lemieux, work together, a collaborative effort. We can't, we can't do without water, we need to figure out how to do it and finance it. Good idea, the city finance and do a, do a bond issue for the city to help? I don't know, somebody needs to figure it out, but the, and I think that me have, I have an issue paying, I don't know what I'm paying for. That, the replenishment fee, the GA fee that shows up on my bill, and I can imagine there's a lot of people that can't afford to pay that bill. You've noticed a lot of yards in town, water, you know, they're dying, the grass and everything because people aren't paying that fee. And a lot of it is because I don't know what I'm paying for. We don't have a importing water plan, the whole state of California's in a state of drought, nothing, nothing's been said about how we're going to get the water and if we're guaranteed the water, and how we're going to supply the water to the basin, all the other people that, you know, there's new construction, new homes. Searls Valley's been an employer of people for years, and to cut off their water, that's the other thing, is to threaten to cut off water. If it was me, I was like, oh my gosh, they're going to cut my water. That's a scary thought. What are we going to do without, without water? So, uh, I would just hope in a positive sense, as a community as small as ours, that collaboratively you can work with the Navy, work with Searls, work with the water district, work with the city to try to come up with a solution. So we don't lose our water, because you lose your water, your people are going to go away, everything's, you can't do that. So, anyway, I just hope you can find a way to figure it out. And if you can kind of tell us what the replenishment fee, a better plan, the water district, I know it's like, you're paying for this, we have a plan to get the water here, you know, we don't, I'm just paying this fee and I don't know if I'm ever going to see the result of that. And that, that's part of my concern over my anguish or paying it. I don't mind paying for something if you're getting something for it, but right now I'm not seeing what that is without a concrete plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we answer that real quick? It is, I don't know if it's staff or how you guys want to do that.
Answer which, I've got a couple of things to answer.
Yeah, you have a, a line of things to answer, but I want to at least address that specific question that she had, just she, it's a valid question, where's my money going?
Where?
Yeah, where, where's my money going that I'm paying on my, my water bill? You know, GA.
Well, as far as the entire bill, I don't know the answer. The, the, the GA fee is going to the groundwater authority, and that is going into a fund that will be used to purchase imported water like I've been describing earlier this evening. It's, it's some, well, we, we put an offer out, uh, last month for some, so we'll be buying it in, in chunks. And we're, you know, we have a certain amount we're trying to get to, and we've got a budget for it, and that's what we're trying to do with the money. But what I was going to suggest is, um, the second Wednesday of every month at, at 11:00 AM, we've got a groundwater authority meeting and, uh, a number of people show up and, uh, at those meetings, we go into exhaustive detail about all of the things that the groundwater authority is doing to try to get the water in the basin. And, and everything else we're doing, the monitoring and, and everything else.
Thank you.
Should, should I go down my list?
Uh, no, just let me, let me call for any other public comment and then, any other public comment? Okay, hearing none. I will go ahead and bring it back to council and I, Keith, you want?
Yeah, and Keith had like a string of things he needed. Yeah, and Keith had like a string of things he needs to answer.
Yeah, I'm going to let Keith answer, answer several of the items before we bring it back.
Well, the, I, I guess, I'll, I'll address some of the points raised by Mr. Neal, I suppose. The, the first point was, he's disputing whether or not the, that the, whether or not the water district has the legal authority or the jurisdiction to protect the water resources in the basin, but we already know the answer to that, because they filed a groundwater adjudication supposedly to do exactly that. They could have filed that at any time in the past. So, I mean, the basin has been in overdraft for 60 years, so at any point during those 60 years, that same lawsuit could have been filed. So they have the authority to do it, they did it. Just be 100% clear, I'm not, you know, I have not suggested that there's any disagreement about the facts alleged in that groundwater adjudication. Everybody seems to agree that we've got this chronic overdraft, and we've had it for a long time. It's just the solution of what do you do about that chronic overdraft that there's disagreement about. He characterized the, the fact, I guess, that, that water district customers have been referred to the GA to complain about the water fee, that's, that's a fact, it, it happens, the staff has reported it to me, I don't know what else to tell you about it, that's what's happening. There is supposition in there about motivation, that's an opinion, I suppose, that it's not a, you know, it's not a fact, it's, it's stated very clearly as it appears that, or it seems, that's a signal that, that at that point in time, I'm making a, an educated guess as to motivation. It's no secret that the members of the board of directors, as, as I think has already been pointed out, campaigned against the fee, and so they paid the fee under protest, they held open the possibility of filing a lawsuit against, against the fee themselves, they ultimately chose not to do that. And, and the other lawsuits against the fee, the replenishment fee have actually now been dismissed by the court. So anyway, that, those aren't lies. As far as, again, I, I guess he disputed my characterization of the, of the adjudication, I stand by the characterization of the adjudication, I don't know what else to tell you. It's, you know, in the document. But he asked a couple of questions at the end that I have some answers to that might be of interest to everybody. One is, I think he said, when is, when is the GA, when is the groundwater authority going to force Searls to pay up? I think that was a question, and that is actually in process right now. They had a hearing in June, and ordered them to pay the fee or cease pumping. They have done a site inspection on Monday related to that, and so stay tuned, I guess. Searls is continuing to pump and they're not paying the fees, so they're in violation of that order. And the remedy for that would be taking them to court. Oh, I know, Mr. Neal asked, mentioned the two challenges filed by Mojave and Searls to the replenishment fee, and said, why didn't you mention those cases when you were talking about the adjudication? It's an apples and oranges comparison for a couple of reasons. For one thing, the reason that I was mentioning the adjudication in, in the context of the, of the staff report, is we were talking about the district's financing and what they might need money for, and whether they'd have to raise their rates again, and they've just budgeted about a million dollars a year for that case. They didn't budget anything for the other two cases, because they're not involved in them, so it's not really relevant to that discussion. But it's also sort of not relevant in another way, which is, you know, the district chose to file the adjudication, it chose to spend that money, it was a decision they made. Now, I, you know, I, I, well, it's a decision they made. The, the validation cases that Mr. Neal was referring to was, were filed against the GA, we don't, the GA does not have a choice about that, we're going to defend it. So that's not an election to spend money on legal fees, just, so there's a distinction in that regard too. Mr. Neal also asked, after he asked, when is Searls going to be forced to pay up, the next question is, why can't Searls finance the fee this way? Well, they, they could, as a matter of fact, they could, and, and they should. And, and I'll take it another step forward, further, the, the GA has offered that to Searls, both directly and also that's been stated in letters to the editor and other things filed in the newspaper, so it's very clear that the GA is amenable to financing Searls' portion of the fee too, just, just like with the water district. Ironically, the thing that holds that up, and this is also the answer to the question, why doesn't the GA just finance the whole thing? And the answer is, the reason what holds that up is the fact that we've got these validation cases out there. That prevents us from financing it, because that fee may be interrupted at some point. The water district doesn't have that issue, there's not a challenge to their fee. So now, it's a really ironic position, because, in my view, because as I mentioned, the trial court has thrown out the challenges to the replenishment fee. So the risk is that sometime later on appeal, that the appellate court reverses it, and then, you know, then we've got a problem. That may not, but they've got other sort of challenges based on SEQA and other things they filed that they are interested in pursuing. So we're in this strange position where if they voluntarily dismiss the case, we could make the fee cheaper for them, but instead we will apparently litigate for several years. And I guess we can all reflect on the wisdom of that, but that's where we are.
Thank you, sir. Counsel comments? I'm going to go ahead and, Scott, you're, you're writing feverishly, so I'm going to let you go first.
Okay, well, so I have a, a couple, actually three questions. First, I'd like to say, you know, for the city's concerns, not so much the finances of the water district, although that is important, but it's the concerns of whether the water district has in the past, present, or into the future looked at the water sustainability in the sense that, is it protecting the, what we represent, the 28,000 to 30,000 citizens and, and which compels a greater portion of the water district's ratepaying customers? So I have a couple of questions that I think Mr. Zadiva or Mr. Kocinski could, could answer. You're not answering questions on? Mr. Kocinski, in regards to your comments that you made earlier, I have, I have a couple of questions about. I missed that, so I'm, I apologize, Mr. Zadiva, for not catching that earlier part.
I'll do my best. Okay, so my first question is, and it pertains to this, you know, what I mentioned earlier about the, you know, past or present or, or future, you know, looks into the sustainability and water management. So has the water district in the past had any dealings with ag in land deals that resulted in the loss of water rights from the water district?
I couldn't answer that.
Do you, you can't answer that?
I won't answer that.
You won't answer that?
No.
Okay. So you mentioned solutions, come together moment, and we have brought some ideas and for solutions to the water district, whether it pertains to the replenishment fee or the recycled water program. So I'm asking you, what are your solutions in regards to the Indian Wells Valley Water District, and I know you're not speaking for them, you're speaking for yourself, but you brought up the topic, and how it regards to the sustainability of the basin, and particularly the city of Ridgecrest?
You know, when I was, was I on a GA, I've always stated that, you know, the plans that the water district included growth of the city, that's always been there, it's in the plan as well, so I'm not saying anything that's not there. As far as some solutions, one solution that really disappointed me is that when, when the city failed to continue to work with the water district on recovering the wastewater, I think that was a big error. The, and there's nothing here I'm saying that's not public already. The water district had a workshop about the, the recovery of the wastewater, they came up with costs, they came up with ideas, the board at that time selected what they thought was the most efficient way to go, considering that when you deal with wastewater, you can't just put it all into landscaping, because eventually it's got to go somewhere if no one quits, if landscaping and irrigation stops. So I remember, if I remember correctly, the board at that time was recommending that you do full injection process, and there's 2,000 acre feet a year. And if I, and I can't speak for the board now, and I'm not at all, but the fact is that they had cost estimates, and, and, excuse me, Mr. Lu, they were nowhere near $100 million, okay? You had $100 million in here, and if I remember correctly, it was just around $39 million. And basically, a lot that could have hopefully be gotten from grants, into Prop 1 grants when you get into construction. So all that was discussed, and, and there's, there's 2,000 acre feet right there, right away, and which, which I think was always considered a low hanging fruit, the easy thing to get to, until at some time or another, that came to an end. A lot of issues were involved with that, I'm not going to dig into them or what they were, but I felt very disappointed that the water district wasn't able to continue to work with the city to acquire that water. And all of a sudden, it is a political hot potato, if you want to call it that, for one reason or another, that just stopped. And so, so that was a low hanging fruit. As far as what other ideas the water district has, I, I would rather you refer to the board, some, they may have talked about others, they may have massaged some ideas, they may have come up with some other ideas. I think Peggy members way back when they did testing on reclaiming brackish water, there's a test quite a few years, quite a few years ago, and they came up and they, they did an actual test, they figured out what the cost was per acre foot at that time, which was too high, especially with the requirements from the state that you cannot have any discharge, so you're going to have to do something with your discharge, and I, I believe, I hope I'm right, that the water district is still working along with other entities for, for looking at other brackish water recovery, which is basically, is it considered new water amount? I don't have the answer to that. But all those things put together, you know, start adding up, 2,000 acre feet here, 2,000 acre feet here, 3,000 acre feet here. And as, and as I see the plan, the, the plan is that commercial farming is going to be gone. So you keep saying 29, 28,000 acre feet, but when all's said and done, it's somewhere around the neighborhood of 11,000 to 12,000 acre feet. So, okay, you're still short from the 75, 60, but it's, when, when it's all said and done, and the farms aren't producing anymore, your needed water is quite a bit less. And you all know I'm the advocate of looking at every possible angle, to, to drop everything into one hat, of, of bringing water from the south and, you know, throwing, you know, how many people really truly understand the state water project? What water's available, how you negotiate, how many contractors you buy it from, what happens? I mean, it, it's money that this, there's, there's no, I think someone, I think this lady here said, I wonder where my money's being spent? And heck, I sat on the GA, and I couldn't tell you where the money's being spent. I just don't know, I look at, you know, I have, I have a financial here, I don't know. So I just think that, 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 that the GA, with the city and the water district and the cooperation of those two, can put together a decent plan that is going to bring some projects to this community that are affordable for this community, and we can make this happen. But until, until those two entities, two main entities, okay, sit down and talk about it, and lay out the plan, you're going to be fighting like this. I'm sorry, I may have went too far for your question.
No, no, that's fine.
Yeah.
Because one of the solutions is the one that we presented to the water district, and that's, that's the recycled water program, so I'm glad to hear that. So my, my other question is, you mentioned the county, and, and pushing the blame over toward the county, but my question too is, where was the Indian Wells Valley Water District's support to the county when they were trying to prevent impudent water use in the basin?
I'm not sure what you're referring to, if you're referring to some, again, I'd have to have you talk to the board and to the water district itself, I know there were some back and forth accusation of not supporting something or another for the county, but the letters were actually there supporting it, Peggy might even been there at that time. I'm not sure what you're talking about, yeah.
From a city's perspective, you know, my concern is, what has the water district done in the past to promote the future sustainability and protect the citizens of Ridgecrest? Now, you don't have to answer that right now, but that's what I'm, that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at.
I think you need to look at what the work that the cooperative did for over, almost 30 years.
So you were part of the passing of the GSP, correct?
Correct.
And the water district was?
Correct.
They were part of the, setting the replenishment fee.
I was, I was sitting on the GA at the time, yes.
And, and played, played a big part in, in that, in putting it together and, and agreeing on, on those, those aspects of it. So, you know, it is a big ask when the city, you know, is it reasonable, as mentioned earlier, it was asked if it's reasonable for this ask, or this request of, you know, the, the water district playing a part in the financing. The replenishment fee was set based on the cost of water, imported water. So looking at that, we know what that cost is, but now that we know that, we, we look at other ways, okay, could we lower that replenishment fee by financing this water out over a longer period of time, which a lot of municipalities do? That makes good sense, because it could be spread out, as was stated earlier, over current and future ratepayers. We would still reach the monetary needs that we need for purchasing water, because you know very well that in a year now, there's 70, I think, eight other basins, don't quote me on the number, but, that are going to be coming on board with their GSPs. Water is only going to get more and more expensive and less available, we know that. Infrastructure, there's been talk about, well, do we bring on, you know, water first? No, let me, let me finish, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to speak right now, and whether or not there's any, you know, what, the cart, the cart before the horse mentality, but we can only get infrastructure, the longer we wait, that will get more expensive, but it makes sense to try to get that water now while we can. And so it has been your, I'm, I'm not saying you particularly, but it has been the water district's responsibility to be the purveyor of water and to be looking out for the best interest of this city. And so being a part of this, it seems like a collaborative measure that would make sense to do. So helping to finance it, helping to get that water, helping to play a part in meeting the, the needs and the goals of this community, so that's, that's where I'm coming at from it. So, you know, I don't think that, I'll be honest with you, I don't think that, that the water district has done their, their part. I don't think they were supporting the county when the county needed support to try to limit, you know, water or usage or improving water use in the valley. I don't want to beat, beat the past record to death here, but where is the track record here? So from the city's perspective, I think it's imperative that the city take a very laser appro, laser focused approach on where are we going to be with water for this community in the future? What are we going to do to be proactive, to, to fix and, and to make solutions that, that, that make sense? So.
I thought I wouldn't speak, but I have to address this, because I think you're being scripted by Phil Hall. The water district sent three letters.
I disagree with that.
The water district sent three letters to the county when farming was coming into this community. We've sent them to, to the county, and I can send them to you.
So let me ask you the same question, were you aware of any, any land dealings between the, the water district and, and ag that resulted in the loss of water rights?
What's that?
I'm asking you, if you are aware of any land dealings between the water district and ag that resulted in a loss of water rights from the water district?
A, a loss of water rights from the water district?
Right. Sell land, lose your water rights.
I'm responding to your statement that the water district did not speak up with ag coming into the valley. We sent three letters, and I can send them to you, if that's what you'd like.
I would like to see them, sure.
I will send them to you.
Open any, any information you have.
Has been sent to the county, because that statement keeps coming up time and time again, the water district was not taking any action, the water district did. I will concede, we didn't go over and speak to the board of supervisors, but we sent three letters.
So you didn't go over and speak to the supervisor?
What's going on here is precisely what I'm talking about, can you see it? Can everybody see it? I know you can see it, I know this guy can see it. That's precisely what I'm talking about, creating an adversarial relationship.
You came on board.
And, and the point, and the point of it is, why am I standing here?
You came.
You know, why am I, I'm standing here as a citizen.
You came here on your own will, and you did make some inflammatory comments, and you understand that.
Inflammatory comments.
The only thing that you were fighting, or stating comments against, you sat here and, and projected back to us, and I'm asking you to clarify some of those points.
I did not do any inflammatory comments. I, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll go through this list if you want to, but this is what I'm talking about, this, this is what I'm tired of hearing. Why can't we get along on this? I mean, it's not you getting along with me anymore, it's you getting along with him and, and his board of directors. That's where the issue is. So, so don't sit there and, and, you know, come after me for any reason, or look for answers for me, because I don't have the authority to give them, nor, nor will I. I have an opinion, I'll be more than happy to give that, and there's a whole lot of opinions I like to give, which I'm holding back on, I'm, I'll save them for another time. That's all I've got, unless you, the rest of the council, I appreciate if you have any questions for me, I'll, I'll take them.
No, no questions, Ron, I just.
I just wanted to, well, for a moment, diffuse, diffuse a bit, just for a second.
I'll, I'll take a deep breath.
Okay, just a, just a quick deep breath. And I'll just say, not, not, this is not to you, not to Don, this is not to anybody else, this is to Scott. And it goes back to the statement I said in the very, my, my first statements when I was stumbling over myself and trying to find my thoughts. And that, that is that it appears in the public that yes, we are at an, I don't want to use the term impasse, but we're certainly diverging. And that's not great. I'm just going to reiterate what you're saying. I'm not speaking for the whole council, but I'll certainly speak for myself. And that is that, yeah, it's a concern, it's a worry. I don't like it. I don't like the idea of these two entities going different directions. When it appears that they have the exact same, or should have the exact same fix in mind, they should. I understand there's a lot of politics behind this, so if the public's watching right now, they are, it seems like it's obvious, but I just wanted to diffuse for a second and say, yes, you're right. We, we should be working together. We are not. There's been a lot happening in the public eye that has, I don't think this letter came out of nowhere. You know what I mean, Ron? Like I'm not, I'm not saying this at you, but I'm saying it didn't come out of nowhere. There, there can't be this much, you can't, we, I'm not to sound glib, but you can't poison the well this much and think that there's not going to be some adversaries. So I think that we just need to revisit it and I, I was going to say, I thank you for coming up here. I genuinely thank you. I voted for you. I voted for you because I, I think you're, you're a brilliant guy and I appreciated your, your input.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure you're probably trying to sit down, I don't want to keep rattling on. I just wanted to, I just wanted to diffuse for a second. Now, I, I know Scott has been on that board and taking flak and heat, just like you did for so long, it does not surprise me that he has the questions he has because they're, I mean, he's in it every day, every day, and you, you probably remember what that's like. I don't, nor will I. So, thank you.
Am I dismissed?
I think, I think you are always free to, free to go if you want to.
Thank you.
So let me, let me say this. I was trying to diffuse the situation a little bit, not because I think it needed it, just because that's my personal feelings. I would like to go talk to the water district. I would, I would like to be, I don't know if it's a presentation, I don't know if it's just a five minutes where I get to stand up and present the city's case and where we're standing. I don't think it's unreasonable to ask what we're asking. I think if the water district decides that it is not doable, then that's up to them, right? I don't see behind the curtain. I don't know how their sausage is made, not completely. Like we make assumptions, we, we under, we think we understand exactly how they're doing things, we think we understand where money come, you know, where all the money's coming from and how things could work. I know that I'm listening to, to you, Keith Lemieux, and I trust my staff. I need to say that, I need to say that out to the public, I need to say it to everybody in, in the room. As a city council member, I stand behind my staff, I, I always will. I think that needs to be said and I think that no matter what board you're on, you stand behind your staff, point blank. If there's ever a problem with the staff and the whole city of Ridgecrest, that, that heat, those comments need to come at the elected members. That's my personal feeling. So I would, I would like to be, I would like to be that person if it is, if you guys are so inclined. I would, because I think it needs to be brought to them. And if the water district has, and they probably do, valid reasons to say yes or valid reasons to say no, I think that just needs to be made open and known to the public. And that's okay, right? That's what we're trying to do. Make sure that the, the public understands what's going on because what I see on social media and what I see out in the public, what I see stated is constant blame game and, and I'm just, I'm exhausted with it. I do, I'm not supposed to, but I do take it personal when, when people constantly say garbage about the city. I take it personal. And I'm sure that the water board members take stuff personal. I'm sure they do. Now, I know I've been told countless times by more experienced members to let stuff flow off my back and just ignore it, but I'm, I'm not going to do that. Not going to do that. So I guess I should quit ranting, I was getting worked up there for a second. But I would like to, I would like to be that, that person if, if it'll, if it so pleases the, the rest of them.
Thank you for saying that, Colin. And I, and I know we're running, I mean, we're all burning at the hour, it's, it's almost 11 o'clock. I think that we could probably sit in here and debate and, and discuss until four o'clock in the morning. I, I think that there's comments that each of us want to make and we still have an agenda, we still have an agenda to move through. So what I'd like to do is do two things for the sake of time, which is, I think, I know I have things I want to say, I think Solomon has things he wants to say, I think Peggy has things he wants, she wants to say. Can we just try and limit ourselves very briefly and then get a consensus direction on whether we feel as a council, we want to take this before the water board, as, before the water district, as, as Mr. Blades has offered to volunteer to.
If, if you guys even want to, but.
Yeah, and that, as I said, I, we've only heard, we need to hear, we need to give each of us a few minutes to speak our piece and then, and then we can make a discussion, a decision so we can move the, the meeting forward. I'm going to go first, I'm going to let the two of you go. Again, I, I got into this thing and I've always said, I'm a water idiot and I freely state that and, and I'm going to say it over and over again because it really helps to explain that I'm learning at the same time in a lot of these water issues. But I'm going to tell you, the scariest one is why I used the word Armageddon earlier is, is everything, the adjudication lawsuit is a game changer. I know we don't want to play this blame game and reconcile and I, I want all that too, but the adjudication did laser focus the city into a significant concern for the long-term sustainability of the community. The idea of a preliminary injunction that says we can't build, develop, or do anything else is scary as all hell and we just spent the last meeting, we spent half of this meeting being scared about how our public feels about COVID and we spent last meeting scared about how they were talking about DOD. I mean, I, I don't need to walk in here and be jumping at spiders every other meeting. But the fact is that if you laser focus me on the idea that we're going to have a 75% reduction, that's problematic. Now, I don't believe a judge, I certainly hope a judge wouldn't see it that way, but the fact is that that's what the adjudication asked for. And that scares us. I don't know how many other ways to express my personal opinion is, I have met with each of the water district people, I would be happy to meet with them, I have broken bread with many of them more, more than a few times or more than, or popped a few corks with them. I consider many of them friends. But the fact is that this is now a direct potential threat to the longevity and well-being of the city of Ridgecrest and the adjudication created that. And I really truly hope that we can come back because we didn't file the lawsuit. And I don't want to be playing a blame game. I don't want to be playing a game back and forth, especially with people that I think all honestly have the best interest of the community at heart. And I hope that us coming forward and having a discussion can break through that, that ice wall and we can start in that direction. So again, I'm, I'm all for continuing to bring forward ideas, no matter how it chafes somebody's backside or how they take it emotionally or how it, it pisses somebody off, but I'm not going to keep waiting around and put the stake of the long-term longevity of this community at risk of more lawsuit, more challenge. Guys, that adjudication is scary. And I don't think anybody wants to focus on the real scary, they want to, they want, we want to focus on bitching and moaning and arguing and complaining and doing all that because it puffs ourselves up about blame, rather than focusing on the idea that a 75% reduction of water across this entire community is Armageddon. So with that, I support Mr. Blades obviously going and I will pass it on to Ms. Breen.
Having been involved in water since 1983, I have served on the water district, I have served on the city, I have served on the GSA, and I believe I have long-term knowledge of what has been involved in this water issues. I think that we have to get past the idea of placing blame. I think we have to get past the idea that we, I'm sorry, I have lung issues and can't talk well, or I would have volunteered, but I think Kyle is the right person to do it and come back to the city and the water district. But we have to get past the idea that it's us against them. We work together, we serve the same people and we have to grow. I am very concerned that the water district filed the adjudication because I don't see how it solves anything. It only comes to the point where asking to cut, go back to the 7650, all of us using 76,000, 7,650 acre feet of water can't be done as we exist today, cannot. And where that happens and how that happens concerns me as a resident and a business owner in this community. We can't, we can't say we can't grow, we can't say we can't continue, and I want us to find a way to work together and we must and we will because we serve the same people. And so I want to see this happen. I am willing to do anything we can and trying to understand how we're going to import water into this valley. Valley is very difficult for me to try to explain to everyone because the water is available, it can be purchased and it can be done now. We can't do it without financing it easily and we can't finance it with an adjudication both by the, by any of the entities involved. We have to do it together and the Navy has to come up and say, we're going to be part of it, we're going to help, we're going to finance it, we're going to help support by the financing of it. And it is the Navy's job, if they're going to continue to grow and continue to be in this valley, and we want them to, we need them to, because other reason, otherwise there's no reason for us to be here, we have to depend on the Navy to do it. They can't finance it all by themselves, it's going to be all of us working together and I want to be a part of that and help that as a member of the city of Ridgecrest, as a member of the community who lives in this valley. And so I, I'm here and we can do it together and we can put the adversarial relationships aside and begin to work together again like we used to, but it's all of us working together. That includes the Navy.
The agenda item is water district to finance its replenishment fee. We discussed about that and we also talked about the general adjudication. So if the adjudication is in place, are we still asking water district to finance the fee? So on one side we are saying with the adjudication, we cannot grow, and then on the other side we are asking water district to finance the fee. So I'm not able to connect both the things.
I'll take that as a question for me. So the, the connection there is, there's, there's two potential solutions to our problem. One is, the, the one solution which is the adjud, what's requested in the adjudication, which is everybody cuts back pumping to the safe yield. The other potential solution is we import the water we need for that additional pumping. And in order to do that second thing, in order to make that happen, we need to have the money to buy the water and we need that money immediately. And so that's where the financing comes in. The way to get the money immediately would be for the district to finance it without, I mean, right now they're, they're getting the money and they're paying it, but they're making the ratepayers pay 100% of what they're paying right now. And so the, I guess the other, the other piece of it is the way to get the money right now, but not put all of the burden on the current ratepayers right now is through financing. So, and it would also give us all the money immediately as opposed to waiting five years for all of it.
Yeah, that part I understand, Keith, but, but with the adjudication in place, we cannot grow, that's what we are saying, right? So if that is the case, why do we need water?
Well, the adjudication being filed by itself isn't the problem. The problem is, is if they request an injunction, then we've got a problem. And they have not, and to be clear, they have not requested it yet. They've just indicated in their complaint that they will request it.
Okay, sorry, I didn't get that part, I apologize. So, yeah, having said that, I like the idea to send one of the council members, preferably Councilmember Blade, to go sit.
Thanks, guys.
You all are here.
Yeah, I was trying to be nice, I was hoping one of you were going to.
So to go talk with the water district to see what they can do for financing the replenishment fee. So I'll go with that.
Thank you.
You wanted to say something? No, 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 I think I've said enough.
I, I, I mean, and I'm also trying to be cognizant of time for everyone. I, I think that this was a, a good discussion, it was certainly a intense discussion. I believe the direction has been given by all five members of the council. Mr. Blades, you will be occupied that evening.
It looks like it.
I, I have, I'll say something in closing comments, but I'm going to go ahead and close this discussion item and move on with our agenda for the evening. The next agenda item is committee reports. Infrastructure is the only committee report present.
We talked about a lot of things, actually.
Do you want to hold it for the next meeting?
No, 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 my mouth is just a little dry.
We would not blame you.
No, no worries. August 30th, we held at 5:00 PM, it was a special, a special meeting we had rescheduled. We talked a lot about lights. We talked a lot about lights and Kelvins and then we debated, so if it's, I'm not intentionally being, well, being glib because it was actually really important. The crux of the issue is that if the city moves ahead with, not the city, SCE is going to move ahead with option E, option E is replacing all the lights in the city. All those lights do LEDs and all those LED lights would be at a certain Kelvin. Somebody stop me if I'm just rattling on. So at that certain Kelvin, which is 4,000, 4,000 Kelvin range, it is, the light gets into a blue light, a blue intense light. That blue intense light at the wattage, I forget what the wattage is, is, there's only been a few of them installed and it's an issue. It's an issue with people living in the area, they think it's too bright. Now, there are some other reasons that appear to be the issue because of the way that the road is situated, the height's different, also they're out on an arterial, so they're going to be brighter than what would be, different wattage than what would be in the neighborhood. Be that as it may, the citizen who brought the complaint forward had, at least I thought, a valid complaint and he did some in-depth research and so it caused us to go off and do some research of our own. What that research showed is that there are other cities, municipalities that have reduced their Kelvin range so that the lights are not as intrusive, obnoxious, intense, you know? So basically it takes it down from, from a blue light to a lesser blue, like almost, almost a daylight, almost a yellow. If you're, if you're in the, it's warmer, it's warmer. There we go. I'm trying, I'm feeling it in your step, yeah.
It's 11 o'clock, we don't want.
No, that's, that's okay, that's okay. Warmer is the phrase. The reason this is important, I feel like it's worth rattling on about, is because it does have implications for the city in the future because the citizens could, we could install every single LED light in this whole town and people could be really bent out of shape. Or on the opposite end of the spectrum, we could see streets that do not have light projected all the way across, especially the main arterials. That was actually something one of the commissioners brought up and it was a good, it was a good, and staff is leaning towards that, right? So he's having to deal with me, push back on it a little bit, but I think we settled on 3,000 Kelvin we're going to look at and there was some other research that Mr. Reed's going to do and I think I've talked about that long enough. I had brought up because of a citizen complaint, a four-way stop at Argus and Balsam. That is not going to work, so that's just, there's just not, it doesn't meet the requirements for what a four-way stop would be. Another commissioner brought up the idea of putting in a flashing, put a flashing stop sign in. We're going to.
We're going to examine what the cost that is, because it's not as cheap as it seems. It's not just slapping some lights up. There's some support that has to go in, some changing of poles, some signs, so. More to follow there. Reed's got, Mr. Reed's got some research to do. We got a quick brief on our ADH transition plan. We're moving forward, and we're in compliance with Department of Justice. Street lighting on down, that's another thing, more research is being done, so we're on standby there. And Mr. Reed briefed a street sweeper schedule. So, that was something we just discussed. It was just a matter of discussion, no action taken. That's all I have to report.
Any questions?
None.
None? Okay, thank you, sir. Either committees, boards, or commissions?
If you all just nod your heads, we can all move on.
No, let's just get, I mean.
Oh, keep going. Let's go.
I'm just kidding, I don't have anything.
I can come up, I can keep talking. City manager report. Nothing to add.
Very quick.
Future agenda items. Do you have any future agenda items specifically?
I don't think.
I don't think we have any specific future agenda items.
Well, when is the next meeting?
Next meeting would be the 15th of September.
So do you want me to report out on what happens at the Water Districts, or are we just going to read it in the newspaper?
Actually, you know, you're actually absolutely correct. There should be a follow-up discussion on the September 15th meeting.
No, no, I'm not saying there needs to, yeah, we could do it at the end of the meeting. Don't, we don't need to make this into a discussion item. It doesn't have to be that way.
Okay.
I'm just.
We can make it into a discussion item.
I'm not afraid of it, obviously, but.
I agree. There, you know what? It's transparent.
Yep, you're right.
Okay, mayor and council comments. If we go right to left, Peggy?
None.
It's a good meeting. Thanks for everybody who participated. So, I have learned a lot on the water, so, my first water exposure, so.
Oh, it's me now?
Yeah, I always, I get to do that. I always take the beat.
No worries. I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware, not that anybody's, is anybody still watching, Ricka?
Yes, there's one.
Okay, well, if you're watching, Inyo County's, they didn't, I'm just, you know.
Those four that are down.
Usually the numbers start, the numbers start going down when I'm talking. Inyo County is going to be closed 8:31 to 9:17. So if you had plans to do some camping, that is not going to happen. Sorry to say. And I wanted to express a general support for, during tumultuous times, we talked a lot tonight about adversary and the splitting of the community. I'm not going to rattle on about it because we all say the same thing, because it's genuine. You have your whole city council up here doing the best they can to stand in that fray and keep things together. And it's not always simple. It's not as simple as it seems. So, I want to express a gratitude for the USC's council members for everything you guys said tonight and the work you did. I want to express gratitude for the other entities that are taking a lot of flak right now. That is, I almost said the Water District. The school board and the hospital, they're going through a lot. And they're the same, it's a lot of the same situation where their employees are being pulled at for politics and policies that are maybe out of their control, and we all see a lot of that. Good night.
Thank you, sir. So, my closing comments, I just want to again thank everyone who joined us this evening from the public. We appreciate your discussion, we appreciate your dialogue, we appreciate your patience. I now hit the six-hour mark, so I joined that illustrious club of six-hour council meetings. I think tonight was very important in doing some, I call them clearing the baffles, if you've heard that old term. There's a lot of people had to get some stuff off their chests, and I think that existed out there and that existed over here, too. I think the COVID discussion was fantastic. I praise each of my council members for wearing their hearts on their sleeves and being genuine. I think that we are all too often plagued with the politician tag when we are much more human beings who do the same things that you do every single day. And then it was a good discussion amongst our public. There is no good side in that argument. And likewise, there is no good side in the water argument. It is a hard, hard argument that is, that is the result of decades of cankicking. Now, I'm not going to point fingers, and I'm not going to say who, and I'm not going to say why, or what, or anything else. But the facts are, right now, kicking it further or ignoring what the adjudication or ignoring what the impacts are, is how we got ourselves into divisive situations that have hurt our community in the past. And this council, at least this mayor, and I do strongly believe this council, we are not going backwards in that direction. We are going forward. And even if it pisses some people off, we're going forward. Because sitting back any longer on this issue is not going to solve the issue. Water is a commodity. I'm buying stock in it because I think it's such a great commodity. The fact is, the prices are going to go up. We are going to need to have the water in order to go to the Navy and say, we need your help for the infrastructure. You're going to walk over to them and say, hey, why don't you just, you know, help us with a $100 million project? That's if we can get the water. You know, I know exactly how well that will go over. We have a lot of hard projects in front of us. We have a great team, we've got a great staff. Kyle, you nailed it when you said we support our staff. That was the best answer you could have said, is, we asked our staff to present to us a report of the facts that we see and that we're experiencing, and we presented that, we had a good discussion about it, and now we push forward. And I sincerely, if any one of those five Water District board members are out there listening, if they're one of the 22, these five and your five, we want to find middle ground. But it's going to take both sides moving, not just one. And we have to do it transparently, and we have to do it with facts, not with rhetoric and blame. It serves no purpose than to self-enrich your own ego. Have a great evening. Take care. We'll see you in two weeks on the 15th. It's not morning!